Okay, we are now live.
I'd like to welcome everyone and we'll start by having our invocation if you will. Please bow your head and Drew if you'll do our invocation also bless our food.
All right. Dear Lord, thank for this evening, the time we have to have this meeting and bless our actions and our thoughts and our words and our discussion and be with us throughout this meeting and help us to remember it's all for the best things from the town of Hope, Nels. And as we eat together bless this food and hands up prepared with Jesus name we pray.
Amen. At this time is there anything that you'd like to add or delete to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
We have one resident here.
And we did have one member of our community here with us this evening. Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, we're gonna have, we've got just a list of things for us to discuss and then have, kinda make some, not really make decisions, but make suggestions so that then when they take this back, they can start looking at what we need to put on our budget retreat, things that we're interested in. So I guess I'm gonna turn it over to Drew or Melissa.
Okay, let me just go ahead and start.
Drew's gonna start with the, he's handed out the budget schedule and he's gonna kinda go over that and the process and then we're gonna tag team after that, so.
Okay. So I gave everybody a copy of the budget calendar. This is essentially what we've incorporated since I've been here as finance director and it works very well. It gives us a budget on time and it's everything done that we need to do. The purpose of tonight is to get your priorities of these different items that y'all turned in, of projects that you want to do. We need to discuss each one a little bit, talk about where it lays in the priority of all of our projects because we can't do everything at the same time. We have to spread it out and pace ourselves and even phase some of it in. But once we set those priorities, then we'll get together Friday, March 6th and have our board retreat and we'll do, have town staff do presentations about some of these priorities, about what we can do, what we might not can do now, or ideas of how we can do it or when we can do it, those sorts of things, so we can see how can we incorporate this into the budget. So, with that being said, if you look at the schedule, when we get back next week, I'm gonna close out the month of January and once I get that done, that gives me seven months of actual monthly data to give to each department head. So I'll be giving them the current year, seven months worth, and they have to estimate to me the last five months, what they think they need to finish up the year, February through June. And so that's the first line here, completed current year estimates. So they need to give that back to me by the last week of February. Once I get those back, then I give them the worksheets for next budget year. I estimate out the current year and see what we need to do with this year, then I give them all the sheets and documentation for them to give me their estimates and justification and request for the next year. So then I need those back from them by the end of March, that March 23rd date. Then I put together a packet for myself and the manager, for Melissa, and then we go through it and have our questions and things and then so we take two weeks to meet with each department. And then we ask them questions and justification for all the things during that budget. That's pretty much where Melissa has her red pen and says yea or nay on most of the stuff that they've asked for. And then once we finish with that round, then usually by the end of April, I get it balanced, we give it back to the department heads and pretty much say, is this something you can live with? Do you have questions on what we've put in the budget? And then they have an opportunity to come back to myself and Melissa if they need to. And then once that's done, we try to have you the budget for first meeting of May. I do have May 4th or 18th in here because just in case we don't have it balanced or we're still trying to figure out some things, we could give it to you the second meeting of May. But the goal in what we've done the last three years is giving it to you the first meeting of May. So you'll have the same book and I don't know, were you here for a budget when I've done one before? The booklet that you get is the exact same thing that me and Melissa have. You have a copy of every single thing that the department heads have submitted for their requests and justification. So you're looking at the same thing that we're looking at as far as what's in that report. Now, we'll have notes and things in ours, but as far as what's been submitted to us, you get the identical thing. So you'll have that, then at that meeting that you get it, you'll set the budget workshop, which will be sometime in May, but it gives you time to go through it and come up with questions. And then we sit down, me and Melissa are there, all the department heads, and it's your time to ask questions about the budget that you have. And then once we get through that, if there's any changes that we have to do, we'll make those changes and then have the first meeting of June at the public hearing and either adopt the budget or we have that second meeting of June just in case there are issues or we can't get it balanced by then, that sort of time, that sort of thing, then we do have that second meeting of June that we can approve it also. But the last two years, we've adopted it the first meeting of June, so.
And we should continue that protocol.
That's the plan, but if something comes up and, you know, we have an extra two weeks scheduled in there just in case. So, and I know prior to when I was here, we were doing special meetings to get it approved on June 30th.
Oh gosh.
So that's not what I like to do.
Yeah.
But anyways, if there's any questions on the budget schedule, this is what we're gonna try to do and, well, that's the goal, to do it like this every year and hopefully we'll be able to do that again. So if you just wanna know where we are in the process, that's the schedule.
Could we, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could we fill in the blank with 18th?
Well, I'd rather you wait until you actually get the budget because just in case I don't give it to you until that second meeting of May, that gives you two days to look at it. So I would rather we set that meeting, that date at that meeting.
It's just, it's flowed well in the last two years, just in this.
Yeah. We included a calendar.
Yeah, well, that's definitely my goal to do this, but sometimes other things get in the way.
Yeah. But I think too, for the sake of the nuance in this process, especially Department of Prey, is the reason for it being this way, it not only streamlines it, but all the things that the department heads want, it's been brought before the finance director and before Ms. Adams and they take care of all those questions, so we don't have to ever, it used to be a dog and come to show, all the department heads came before the board and this way it's so much better because they've already listened to and settled what, you know, what's they can afford to do and that, so that by the time it gets to us, it's just a matter of us.
Right, because really, y'all's input into the budget is kinda the purpose of tonight and that March 6th Friday meeting.
And Rockfish.
So that's y'all telling us what your priorities are, what you wanna see in the budget based on the information that we're gonna give you at the budget retreat. And then we, me and Melissa, we do our best to try to incorporate into that, but again, there's only so much money.
Yeah.
And there's only so much we can do in a, in a given year, so we try to do as much as we can. So, any questions about the budget process? And it's worked very well the last few years.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has.
I've never had applause for a budget before, until last year.
Last year, yeah.
Very smooth.
Yeah.
Easy to understand, easy to comprehend.
All right, you ready to go to the next thing?
Yep, we'll go to the next.
Okay, the Public Safety Building. I gave y'all an update at the last council meeting or two meetings ago and as of now, that schedule hasn't changed, we're still on track for that. And just to give you an update of what that schedule is, the architect is almost finished with the final construction drawings, so probably sometime next week, he'll be sending them to the Department of Insurance to get their approval. And once we get the Department of Insurance approval, then our inspections department, fire marshal and everybody will look at them. And then once they are all approved, which will be sometime during the month of February, then probably by March, if there's any changes that have been made, then we make those changes. So by the time March gets here, we're ready to send out the RFPs for bids, construction bids. When we send those bids out, we need time for folks to send them back, so we might have a three-week period that we'll wait for the bids to come in. So if the bids come in by the end of March, maybe first week of April, we'll select one, bring it to y'all at that first meeting in April for approval of which one we recommend going with and then once that's approved, they can get started. Also, what's gonna be going on the month of March is, well, I'll finish with the new building and I'll talk about the temporary. So, we approve the contract, hopefully the first meeting of April. If we don't have one, then we could also do it the second meeting of April because the goal is to break ground sometime in May for the new building. So, it's moving quick now. It's been really slow the last year and a half, but now it's starting to move really fast. So by May, we're hoping to break ground. And then, once we break ground, we're thinking about 16 months for construction and we'll have to do it in phases because they'll tear down the existing police station probably sometime in April because that whole site has to be completely cleared. So we've got different, there's a lot of moving parks with this thing, so we've got to get everything on the site moved off of that site, so we've got several different agencies helping us with that and departments. So once the site's clear, we'll break ground in May, start construction, takes 16 months and then once that's finished, then Phase Two will be moving the fire station into the new building. That should take them a few weeks, once they're out of their existing fire station, then we tear that down and then Phase Three will be constructing the new entrance to the fire station and the parking lot where the existing cars, where the existing fire station sits now. So then we should finish by March of 2022 and then we'll have a big celebration.
Do you wanna mention about Scott being the project manager?
Yeah, Scott Garner, our architect, y'all have met him, he's been in the meeting, he is actually, unlike the town project manager for this, he is the project manager that will be working with the contractor and all the subcontracts that are actually constructing the building. He does this, it's part of our contract with him. He's done this many times before for other fire stations across the state and that's one of the reasons why we selected him because myself, Chuck Hodges and Deputy Chief Steve Lopez went and looked at about 12 different fire stations that were designed and built by, some by Scott and some by another group and we selected him based on the stations that we looked at and what he was able to do in the comics we got back from the firemen that ran that station. He will be onsite at least once a week, more if necessary. Will have weekly meetings with the contractor and make sure everything happens like it's supposed to.
If this wasn't part of what he does, we would've had to hire someone like MVP or, because Scott is going to be acting kind of like our overseer, you know, our project manager, but it's inclusive into his.
Right, I'm the town contact, so if he needs anything from the town, then he contacts me and then I either check with Melissa or whatever we have to do, but pretty much so far, it's all, it went pretty well.
Yeah, there were, there were a little bit of concerns from some of the staff because they weren't aware that Scott was acting as the, as the project manager.
Right.
And now that, you know, Drew's going to every, every meeting.
Plan review committee.
Plan review meeting on Thursdays and keeping everybody updated on what's happening. And once that was made clear, all of those concerns were alleviated, so.
Okay, so then the update on temporary police station. All the sheet walks up, they're painting now. I stopped by there today on the way here and it looks really good inside.
I did an update in my manager's report, but now it's, it's out of date because they're working so quickly.
I'm sure they're doing it every day.
Yeah, so much that they're doing every day, so.
But we'll definitely do some type of ribbon cutting or grand opening or something for that building when it's done, but right now, they're looking at being finished sometime around the end of February. So the police will start moving out of their existing building, move into that one during the month of March. It might take them two or three weeks to completely move out and get situated over there and then we have to make sure everything works, all the computers, the phone lines and fiber and all that. So, once we know they're in, everything's good. I think fire department's gonna do some training in their building. They might enjoy smoking out the police station and doing some training in it before we tear it down. And of course, anything that's in that building that can be reused or salvaged or whatever, we'll make sure it's taken out. We've had the, what is it, the, the testing for the, what's it called?
Asbestos.
Asbestos.
Asbestos, yeah.
There's no asbestos in the existing fire station or police station, so we don't have to do any mitigation.
What is the possible expense of all the fiber optics that have to be taken out of that building and hooked up to the other building? I know it's already written, the other building, right?
Right, we've already got the other building hooked up to the sheriff's fiber line.
Yeah.
What is involved in removing the fiber optic from that building?
It's a box on the inside that PWC owns and when we're ready to like say, all right, today we're stopping this building and starting the other one, PWC comes, they take that box out, put in a new one, hit switch and they're live, ready to go.
Yeah.
I've been talking with, see that's one thing I've been doing, is coordinating all these agencies to get the different things done when they need to be done. So I've got the person at PWC, they're on notice that at some point in March is when we're gonna need to switch that out, so they know that and are expecting that when that hits here. Duke Power, they came by the other day because right now, the power that goes through the existing police station, there's a transformer behind the library and that feeds in directly to the transformer next to the police station. So then, the power comes out of the back of that into the back of town hall and then into the back of Parks and Rec. So we had to think, well, if we eliminate that power through the police station, that eliminates power to town hall and Parks and Rec. So Duke Power came out, they actually said it's on a loop because we didn't do the entire property, we only did the area where the construction's gonna be, but they said Parks and Rec also has power coming from one of the lines on Rockfish. They said for a complex like that and what it is, they're gonna have just one way for power to get in. So they have two ways and it's on the loop, so if one way is disconnected for some reason, there's still another way the power can come in. So he said we can abandon the lines over there behind the police station. It's not a problem, we'll send power to Parks and Rec and Town Hall on the other one. When the new build is created, they'll reestablish that loop and we'll still have that, so that's not a problem. But it's just doing things like that with every agency that we have to include. We had to find out where the sewer lines were and get those mapped because the manhole by Rockfish is directly in front of the police station and the sewer line comes from that at an angle to town hall, then straight to the police station, but the fire station line comes off the side of the police station line. So we had to figure out, what we're gonna do is, when the police station comes down, we have to leave the one to the fire station, so we'll just leave that there, it'll eventually be abandoned. The line that comes to town hall is actually gonna have to be moved because where it goes now, it's gonna be underneath the new building and you can't have the sewer line underneath the new building, so they're gonna have to reroute the line to town hall. But all these things we're finding out is what we're taking care of so we can make this happen, so this is some of what I've been doing the last several months. So when you think, man, why's this taking so long? Because we keep finding things that we didn't know of before and then we have to take care of it and make sure it's not gonna be a problem. So, but this schedule that we're on now, like I said, we've found all the issues, taken care of everything and hopefully May, we'll be breaking ground.
I mentioned to Ms. Adams here a few weeks ago, when they start to move that memorial from the police department, I'm not real aware or not, there's a name spelled wrong there.
Oh.
Yeah, I've spoken.
They wanna correct that.
I've spoken to the chief about that and he's, he's taking care of, he's gonna take care of all of that. And I, and I spoke to the widow as well.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Collier.
And the police memorial, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have the contractor move it because we don't have the equipment to move that marker that's there, so we're gonna, they're gonna take it up for us, we're gonna store it at Public Works and then the new area's gonna be in front of the new building off what will be the new sidewalk. There'll be one for police on their side and one for fire on theirs.
That's good.
Yeah.
So it'll be reestablished in another area in front of the new building.
Drew, is the cost estimate still the same that you've been briefing?
The architect, I talked with him, actually I talked with him last night as I was driving home because he did get up with me during the day and he's got the new estimate. He said he had sent it to me this morning before I came here, but he was still working on it apparently. So when I get back on Monday, I should have the new estimates because I've gotta get that to USDA.
Yeah.
So I'll have the final estimate on all the changes we've done up to this point, I'll set the entire project budget and then that way USDA, they need that. What's Dan say, did you talk to him? I get that, it's something from Dan.
Yeah.
And that's the last two things USDA needs and then we can lock in that rate at 2.75. If it drops after we lock in that rate, we get the lower rate, but if it goes up, we're still locked in at 2.75. So we're very close to getting that locked in and then once that's done, I'll start the process with local government commission for a loan because USDA doesn't do construction loans.
Right.
They just do the loan for the building itself, so I have to do a short-term loan with probably a local bank, we'll bid it out for two years just during construction and then do drawdowns as we build the new building and then once it's done, we'll convert that loan, pay it off with USDA and they'll help you on payments.
Got it.
Has he given you any indication of the estimate going up or down?
The estimate for the building? He said based on the last quote and the architect was pretty excited, it only went up like 307,000, like 328,000 and he was expecting it to be over half a million. So I thought that was, that was pretty good. Because what we did was, we're gonna put the stormwater underground, we added more security and some cameras, those sorts of things. After we had the final drawings, both police chiefs and our plan review committee looked at everything and then made their recommendations and then back to the architect and said, okay, make these final changes. And of course, now if the bids come in, they're higher than we wanted to be, then we might have to value engineer this thing, we might have to change it a little bit, you know, to get it within our price range, but, because you never know what the bid's gonna be and we won't know that till April. So, once we get the bids, then we'll have to go from there. Hopefully, you know, we'll get good bids.
So we're still looking between 16 and 17?
The loan that I've got with USDA is not to exceed 16.5 is what I told them.
Okay.
Now, we've already spent about roughly 350,000 on this project, part to this one, so if we add that to the 16.5, we're looking at total project and the temporary building because this also includes the money we're spending on the temporary.
I was gonna ask, I was gonna follow up.
Right. Right now, it's like, you can say 16.85, but that includes the temporary too. So when we put this as an asset, the temporary building is not really gonna be an asset, that's all it's spent. So even though it's part of this project, that's not necessarily the cost of the new building, so that'll be kind of a separate amount, but we're, it's part of the project as a whole, but it's a separate piece to it. So when we look at the actual building itself, it'll probably be close to the, closer to the 16, just about the 16.
And maybe talk a little bit about the stormwater and why we chose to.
The stormwater's gonna be underground because the way the, the property is, it's flat. I mean, it does have a slope to it, but really, you know, when you look at our property, you've seen during some storm events, part of the property floods. We do have the catch bases behind the lot, there's two of them kinda behind the library, but not only are they doing our property, they're doing that subdivision across from the library. There's two lines that comes underneath golf view that feeds those same stormwater ponds. So it covers a lot of area, so when we're doing this project, we can't add a whole lot more to those existing ponds. So the original plan had two ponds that would be behind the parking lots, behind the police station and the fire station lot, which would be between their parking lot and what will be the new road that cuts through behind them. So, and pretty much that's the only grass area that's gonna be back there. And I had to see the only open space that's gonna be behind the two buildings, be a retention pond. You know, you can only dress up a retention pond so much. So, what we're gonna do is, that had the idea of putting them underground just like we did those parking lots by Main Street on the other side of the golf fields. Those two new parking lots that we did, those have underground stormwater.
That was a heck of a construction.
We don't have to lose property for a stormwater pond, it's underneath, they're working fine. Every time they've gone down to check them, there's very minimal stuff down there that.
There's less maintenance, there's less cost to maintain.
Plus, yeah, if we do the retainage pond, it's not like the private industry, whoever's putting it in, has to maintain it, no, we have to maintain it.
Yeah, yeah.
We just don't have the staff to do that. We'd have to hire more people and stuff to maintain them. To me, they wouldn't look great and it's wasting land. So we're gonna put them underground, which costs a little bit more, but aesthetically, it'll look a whole lot better. There'll be zero maintenance essentially, except to check them every so often and make sure everything underground is functional like it's supposed to. And the civil engineer that's working on it says, yeah, that'll work great, that'll work fine, so.
I think that's the return on investment, is zero maintenance.
Yeah.
Because it works well in that parking lot.
Yeah, he sent her, his revised plan with the underground and she looked bad.
Yeah, oh yeah, that is the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very happy.
And the other thing that this will do is, at some point in the future, if that, the only open areas that's back there, if at some point, we need to expand a parking lot or add, because one of the things that we originally talked about with this project was a fueling station and our own gas pumps for town. Gas pumps for town, that would probably add about $35,000 to the project, which doesn't sound much when it's 16 million dollars, but what we were looking at originally, it's like, that's something that we don't have to do now, but maybe we can incorporate in the future.
We used to do that.
Could be used for something.
Like the garage.
Yes.
We used to have our own fueling station up there.
Right, but this would be one for police and fire to use, that would be in that area between the two parking lots and then they're gonna have to get gas, that gas station, so it'd be generated, so if there's a storm, it'd be generated power, they can get their own fuel, but that'd be something we could do.
That'd be later on.
Or charging stations.
Yeah.
Have electric cars, I don't know if police and fire will have electric ones or not.
Charging stations.
Yep.
But anyways, that's one of the things we took out.
That's really good.
Look at that later.
That's really good.
But yeah, it's, it's moving quick now and I'm excited. I've been excited about this project.
Yep.
Any other questions about that?
And Drew's done a lot of hard work on it and it should be commended too, along with the Chuck, Chief Hodges, DC Deputy Chief and Chief Ochardak. They've all, and Don Cisco's been pretty helpful too.
Yeah, Don's helped a lot.
Yeah.
And now we're pulling all the other departments.
Yeah.
But just like you said about that thing for the temporary building, when Chance just told me one day, he said, you know, it's a change of use. I said, what are you talking about? He said, the building, the hardware store. It's a change of use for what? He said, you're going from commercial to municipal, that's the change of use, you gotta get that approved by the county. I was like, you've got to get it. I said, why are you telling me this now? He said, didn't you know? I said, no, I didn't know that.
For April, for doing his job.
Yeah, so anyways, that, that pushed us back a month on the temporary build, but the way everything is working now, it's, it's still all gonna work out just like it used to.
Yeah.
So, but anyways, we took care of it.
Okay. All right. Public safety substations, I will just let you all know that there are several projects that are possibly in the works that hopefully, if everything goes right, will be coming to you all very soon. Staff has been in conversation with the developers about property within those developments for substations, so.
What are you saying for?
We're talking, we're talking probably both.
Both.
A police, maybe a room within a fire station, substation, having a police, having a room devoted to a police officer or two.
That's what we talked about four times years ago.
Yeah.
Any fire substation that we built.
Same thing.
We've already talked to Joel about it.
Yep.
It's pretty much just called a police room.
Yeah.
All they need is a room with a desk and they can hook up a laptop. All they need is a room with a desk, and they can hook up a laptop, a laptop.
Yeah, laptop.
Communication.
Have a cabinet with some info, with some stuff in there. So, if they have to do breathalyzer, hold somebody for something, um, depending where these substations will be, we can even team up with like Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, or even the state troopers, and allow them to have access if they need a place to stay. Um, but Joel said, you know, "Yeah, all we need's a room." And we looked at, when we're looking at all the fire stations, um, there was one in Apex, and there was one somewhere else that had a police room. And we asked, "Can we look at that?" And they said, "Well, that's not part of the fire station." It's like, "Yeah, but we might do the same thing."
Right.
And pretty much, it's an empty room with a desk and a thing, because police, their office is their car. They don't hang out in an area, but they sometimes need a place to go to do paperwork.
Remember certainly correctly, is in the Jackmack area?
Yes.
In Legion Road area?
Yes.
And we could have a sub-fire station with a room set aside?
Right.
For police officers to work around the block?
Just know that, um, I can't talk about specific locations or specific developments, but staff is a, a, are very actively engaging these developers. And two of them, they're on opposite sides of the town, and two of them are very, very interested in that, because they see that as an asset for what they're getting ready to put in.
Yes, who didn't know we did that right?
It helps your insurance, right?
It helps, yeah.
That was what selling, we were gonna put that one on Legion Road, but it would increase your, it helped reduce your insurance, because fire department would be there.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so, that's something that they're actively engaging in conversations with, so, um, you know, it'd be nice if we could have the public safety complex finished and be ready right, you know, right away to have, you know, substations, or at least one, get one started. So, that's kind of what we're shooting for, what we're working on, so...
It's all we know right now.
Yep, so, did anybody have any questions about that, that...
No, it's all in the planning stages, so...
Yeah.
They've no definite answer to anything.
Okey-dokey. All right, um, Lake Park Phase Two and Three improvements, and we've got, yeah, you'll have to share, um, yeah, we brought, those are for, um, when we get finished.
Jesse will make that, so you know what it is.
Yes, you know what's in.
I know what it is.
And I may turn this over to you, Madam Mayor, if that's, um, if that's, um, acceptable. Um, I know that we had talked about last year, um, Don was going to look into, um, of course, we're still working the parking lot on Fountain Lane. Um, so, we're still, you know, we're still working on that. Um, Don was gonna look at the swings, you know, at the, in a possible small shelter, um, at the lake, a picnic shelter.
Yeah.
Um, we're also, uh, we, we're applying again for the Kaboom. We did not make it last year, but they said we, they, they are, um...
They're starting over.
We're starting over again, um, this spring. Megan has everything ready to go for the Kaboom grant, so, um, that will take care of the, if we get it this year, that will take care of the playground area there at Big T's. Um, so, one of the issues with, um, with that, with Don, is, one, there's no money funded, so whatever, right now, you know, whatever he had come back with, or, um, you know, we didn't have any money in the budget for it. Number two, honestly, he's been swamped with, you know, all kinds of different projects, and, um, you know, the, the, um, golf course thing kind of took precedence over some things, getting that started, the driveway permit and all of that. So, um, but now that he's got Bruce, um, I'm hoping that, you know, some of these things will move along a little bit quicker. Um, I guess I just need feedback from the board of what they would like to see included in Phase Two. Um, we're, I don't think we're ready to do Three yet.
Yeah, we're not at Three.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, okay.
To me, it would be what we had talked about last year, the parking lot, the swings, and a picnic shelter. And then, of course, getting that Kaboom grant for the playground equipment.
Nothing.
But, didn't know if you had any other...
No, I, I, no, I'm glad you brought up the Kaboom, because I knew we didn't get it last year, and that would be an opportunity for us to...
Yeah, we're applying for it.
To apply for it again.
Yeah.
Not saying that we will, of course, you, you never know what the outcome is gonna be.
Right.
Uh, so collectively, just looking at some of the amenities to put in, that's, uh, I guess that's where we're at.
Yeah. Maybe we could take a break now, and then we'll pick up with what you had in mind for Phase Two, and what everybody else is thinking too.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll adjourn for a minute, I guess. All right, I will come back to order, and where, where we are now is, uh, we're continuing with, uh, the Lake Park, Lake Park Phase Two and Three improvements.
I guess the input you're looking for is, what we're looking at putting down there, what can we afford to put down there, Drew?
Well, the thing is, what we'll do is, if y'all let us know, do you want us to stay according to the plan, and we'll bring something back to you at the meeting on the sixth?
Yeah.
And then, see with that, maybe Don can get some rough estimates?
Yeah.
On, you know, what would cost to do a swing set, what would cost to do that? And then, if y'all say, "Yeah, we wanna do those with the shelter and, you know, go after the Kaboom grant for the playground and stuff, and then..."
And the parking lot.
And the parking lot, yeah. The other, the other question I had was, is there any maintenance that's gonna be required that we know of for the building?
The, uh...
Big T's? I think, didn't we already take care of?
I think those bathrooms have already been done. The ADA to those bathrooms, that was one of the first things we did.
Yeah, they had maintenance beginning this year, or before their season started this past year.
Yeah.
Well, hey, 'cause we, the input from them would be, you know, was that, I mean, they're, they're down there all the time.
Yeah, yeah, and I can touch base with them and see if there's any, any other issues or anything else that needs to be addressed, so that we can be sure. Yeah, so that we can be sure.
I don't know how they put new building there.
And then, um, in, in my manager's report too, was, um, about the, um, repair to the bulkhead, not bulkhead, repair to the end of the bulkhead. And, um, that's part of our, that's, um, it's in keeping in line with the, um, the deener, our permit, um, issued by USACE. So, that, that end down there was starting to erode a little bit. There was some erosion going on, so, um, but I did a, I did an update in my manager's report, so, um, once that's done, then, um, and we've got money budgeted for that, so we're, we're okay. I don't think there'll be anything next year that we'll need to do with that, other than, um, we're looking at reseeding, Don wants to get, um, someone to do an evaluation on the dam area.
The burn part, the ground part.
The burn part, not, not where we planted the grass.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, um, and have, right, and have somebody make some recommendations on that. Um, so, there'll be a little bit of cost to that, but not, it shouldn't be much.
Wasn't there all your sod put on that dam?
That was seed.
That was seed, it was seed.
That was seed.
Yeah.
Without irrigation, so, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, because they both go hand in hand. If we're gonna do sod, we gotta do the irrigation piece.
Would it be possible too, to go back to North County Wildlife and find out about the, the small pier that was supposed to be down there and the rest of the bulkhead? Because I believe that we were in a good part of that, and John Peckman Center, um, and the other one, the, um, healing waters, there's two or three different groups that could benefit from having it in Hope Mills, and that's where we were heading. Um, I missed the, I missed the last, um, event that I was invited to, but, um, I, I just believe that's something that we probably could pursue. It would cost us anything, it would just mean that it would be shared. And that's how it's shared, is where the, the veterans and other people can come fish there, which, we've got a large population of, of people here.
Oh, yeah.
That are fishing, and this would just make the, that end look like it's finished.
There's a room there.
We can, we can engage down again and see, yeah.
The way it was drawn in, where that bulkhead stopped?
Yeah.
Right there is where that small fishing pier is, not like our big piers, a small fishing pier.
It's supposed to be very small.
It's floating here.
Floating pier.
It was a floating, that was the original design.
Yeah.
That would then help with the erosion down there too, because...
I think you did work with them, didn't you?
Yeah, that's what they're doing there.
So...
Rod had the contacts at one time.
Yeah.
When we put the plan together, that was where Rod was, with the contacts for that. And I can reach out to him if you want.
Well, we can get, Tam can get the contacts. Melissa can contact, I'll give you the name of the man that, uh, is at Peckman Center, and then, um, Joshua Hartsfield is the other one that is with Woodland Management, and he lives in Hope Mills.
Okay. And then, we'll look at the plan for, um, the, um, the swings. Yeah, the other improvements, the parking, and...
And we have to have this ring wrong, since we've got the...
Shelter.
Salaby lot, another lot possibly.
Um, they did, they included that, they included the Salaby lot, yes, that's included.
And, and does it have an entrance or exit onto Fountain Lane?
It's going to be an entrance into the parking lot only.
On Fountain?
Uh, from Fountain.
Okay, and then an exit onto Main.
An exit onto Main, I believe is the way. That way, we were looking at designing it, it was gonna be entrance only with angled parking. And it's to be, uh, the majority of it's to be gravel, I believe, but...
Well, see, if you, if we could have it so we only have that one-way in up there and the outs on Main Street, that'd make it so much safer down there.
Right, right.
And that would also, that pedestrian, um, sidewalk, uh, and...
Yeah.
You know, there at Johnson and Main, what would happen is that would make it all work, because of...
Um, speaking of, and we'll kind of jump a, well, I don't think we have that on there, but it's part of the lake, um, improvement areas, but that grant for, uh, the pedestrian crossing down there, um, Bruce and Chancellor are going to be working with Joel to kind of get that jump started. Um, and, but, I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of like the sidewalk projects for Johnson and Rockfish. There's a lot of red tape, and whenever you're talking about, you know, a grant of this magnitude, so... But Joel Strickland has offered to kind of help us and walk us through that, so...
Because I think that, that could tie that right into the improvements in the parking lot. That would make all that work.
Yeah.
Because that, that would be a, the pedestrian crosswalk that would be there. I mean, if you did park over at Robbins, or at the Banks, or whatever?
Right.
It would, it's the regular blinking lights where you, it's the kind that if you, somebody runs you over, they may be charged, it's, it's not just a...
It's an actual crosswalk.
It's an actual crosswalk.
Yeah.
And that'll make, that'll make a big difference in those two entrances, especially if the entrance is on, on Fountain Lane.
Yeah.
It might slow them down to 60.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's the same type of crosswalk that we have on campus. It'd be designed the same way. Yeah. And that's what's needed there, is something very simple that we would have on campus.
And then, the other one's down on, um, Lakeview and Trade in Main, so they're, they're at the Marquee. So, what'll happen, be you, you either in the municipal parking, you'll be able to get across, actually, we have festivals, things that we do.
Yeah.
It'll make a big difference, yeah.
For the Salaby parking, uh, I thought we were gonna design one of those lots for boat trailers.
Boat trailer?
Boat trailer.
Trailers, yeah, yeah. And there may be, we can look at that, I can't remember right off the top of my head. I know the majority of it was gonna be gravel, I believe, but then we have to do some ADA too, so, um, but I'll...
Are those two lots tied together?
Which do?
Leaving lot and the one that we, uh...
Gardener's lot?
Gardener's lot.
Yeah, they're side by side.
Yeah, they're side by side.
There's the gardener lot, and then there's the lot at the end.
Yeah, which there's...
All three of them are tied together. And they were referenced in the plan too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Withers and Revanall referenced all three of those in the plan.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, we'll bring back some more information and cost estimates at the, at the, um,
Budget Retreat. Speaking of, speaking of that, um, is the kayak business still coming?
Yeah, Lamarcos working with them, um, he's meeting with them, and he, and Chancellor is working with them to try to get them a location.
She's, uh, coincidentally, I got a message from her today, and she went to, she was, she called Mr. Porter about wanting to look at the funeral home.
Right.
That would be perfect.
Right.
His sense, it's a hundred dollars if you wanna come look at it, and...
Ken Stargardt in the 100?
And, and it's $200,000 if you're interested in purchasing it. And so, she told, she explained to him that, um, you know, she was interested, and it would be perfect for what she wants to do.
Right.
Because of the garage and all the things that you could do, but she said she, she can't, she said she can't. Well, now, she would, she is looking at, she's found sources for money.
Okay.
But the problem is, she said, she can't afford that, because $200,000, and then another, have or much to gut it and redo it?
I don't understand. You're whistling on the ground here.
The whole thing's got problems.
There's only one building that may be salvageable out of the, out of all of that.
And I don't know.
There's only one.
You would think he would want to sell it, you know, but, but anyway, that's...
It's $200 for the whole property.
She said, yeah, she said $200, she, she texted me today, because she had asked me about, um, if I knew of any properties in town, and she said that that was on her radar, and I told her, I said, "Well, maybe, um, it'll be..."
I think Lamarcos was gonna tell her about, because I had told Chancellor, and then Chancellor told Lamarcos about where Kyle was, the, the Get Twisted yoga, and so, he was gonna let her know about that coming up, available, because as of today, I think Kyle's done.
Right. Well, he said, she said that Mr. Porter told her that, um, that he, he had the last property that was for sale, and he was going to, um, and it was going next, and so, he, she, she told him, she said, "Well, that's way out of her pocket book."
Yeah.
And he told her that it was a hundred dollars to come see it anyway. And she, she said she, she looked the tax value of it, and it's listed on books at 94,000.
You know, it's a shame, it's a shame. His, his brother would have, it's totally different from what you're hearing right here. His brother, Percy Porter, totally different than his brother than Ken.
Her business would have fit there.
She's, that's not dead, yeah, she's still actively looking, and Lamarcos is very anxious. They're working together to work something out at the lake.
And well, she's also looking at the, um, the paint store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But she's looked at several properties down there, she's trying, but...
Yeah.
Stephanie Bentley?
The, um...
She wants, it's gonna be Lake, Lakeside Outfitters.
Yeah.
What she'll do is, will have shirts, clothes, fishing gear, bait, and she'll rent canoes and kayaks.
Yeah, canoes and kayaks. And that's the part that we're interested in partnering her with, at the lake.
And some of that, and some of that storage may end up on one of those two lots.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because, I mean, if we partner, I mean, where are we gonna put it?
Yeah.
Is the Trade Street building in?
No, somebody's rented it, and I don't know who's in it. They haven't put up any kind of sign where, they rented the, they rented the bar, that bar floor, and then I also got White House beside it, but I don't know who it is. They've not put up any sign, Chancellor may know, there's no, no evidence of what's in there.
Right.
There's a lot of traffic, um, been moving stuff in and out of the, the building. But that's what she really wanted, was the corner.
Yeah.
Well, Perkins goes by there.
Yeah.
It's a good location.
So, what's probably gonna happen with the funeral home, we're probably gonna have to... What's probably gonna happen with the funeral home, we're probably gonna have to condemn it. It was there down there. But, it could be harsh.
I don't know, the last time I was inspected. I mean, I know I was in it some years ago, but I haven't been back in it since.
It's not, it's not in good shape.
I know it's not. Well, in good shape the last time I was there.
Good shape was the only thing that you did at the time I was there.
As is the, as the...
It wasn't in good shape. She was gonna have to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to bring it up to code for her commercial kitchen.
Yeah.
So that's, you look at, there's not many people that can afford to...
Not a small business, not my business.
So maybe say hi to them.
Before I say something I shouldn't say.
Me, too.
Okay, Heritage Park, we'll move on to Heritage Park.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I've got, um, I've got a little bit of an update on that. Um, Lamarcos has been talking with Dave Toms, with McAdams, and, um, they have revised the master plan for Heritage Park, and they are sending it, um, to us, to Lamarcos, I think, tomorrow. Once staff kind of gives a, you know, a little bit of a, they've incorporated the comments from the public meeting. They've incorporated the comments from online, um, and then they've incorporated the comments from staff. So, um, that was, those will be the changes that they send back. Staff will look it over, if they, if they send it tomorrow, staff will look it over, and then, um, they'll provide feedback, and once they get that feedback, then they'll complete a rendered drawing. The goal is to present it to the board February seventeenth. So that would be the second meeting in February. And at that meeting also, excuse me, we're probably going to bring forth a resolution for you all to approve, um, granting the permission to go ahead and apply for the Partif Grant. So we have to have that on record as part of the submission process, and...
And then we'll have to have that amount in next year's budget.
And then we'll have to have, at that point, we'll know what features, what they're, how much they're going to include in the Partif Grant, um, and then we'll have to have that as a match.
Right, so if we're looking for three hundred thousand.
Yeah, we'll have to have that.
Then we'll have to match it in that three hundred next year's budget.
Right. So, let's see, um...
Has there been anything said about those gates? That was one of the things that was said.
They've got that one.
No, I mean, about letting them deteriorate now while they sit there.
Um...
See, I have, I know that we had, remember when we had to move one over there? But I haven't been down there and been close to them, so I don't know if the staff has checked them or not, but that might be, that's an issue now, is that we're not looking after them. But I don't know how you would look after them.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
The only thing is, if we, we talked with Don, you'd have, we'd have to get a crane.
Crane, yeah.
We'd have to rent a crane.
Yeah.
And here, we could...
Poor concrete.
And that crane's gotta sit there, whip it up.
Yeah.
And then do a concrete base.
Yeah.
And then put it back down on it. And then with this plan,
Yeah.
if it has the idea to put it somewhere else.
Put it somewhere else, then there you have it.
So...
We were kind of trying to hold off and wait until the Heritage Park piece was done.
Right.
Um, so that we're not, um, going to the expense of, you know, having to move them.
I think, I think if there's any questions...
If we have to move them, we have to move them.
Well, I think if there's any questions, that might be the perfect answer right there, isn't it?
Because if we're gonna have this plan approved in the next few months, then we'll know where the gates should be for it to the plan.
Right.
Well, the gates were in water anyway.
Right.
I mean, so there's not, what can, they can't really be...
When the air gets to waters, when you have a problem.
So, right now, right now, we're looking at, um, at, um, that is the date that we bring that, um...
February seventeenth?
Yeah, yeah, February seventeenth, so...
I hadn't even thought about moving them and putting them back.
It costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
One move.
We did put money in the budget, the historic, um, in their line up or in Parks and Rec, um, can't remember exactly.
It was to clean up that pump house.
Yeah.
And put some kiosks up, but I don't see any reason to put the kiosks up when we're this close to having a master plan.
We're this close to the plan being ready, so...
That was with, if the plan was two years out, then we could do these things.
I'm just wondering.
That's what we were thinking about, using the, um, Partif Grant for something at the golf course property or something. But now that we're back to using the Partif for Heritage, that speeds up part of that project, getting this master plan.
Yeah.
So...
That should move pretty quickly, especially if, um, if we're awarded the Partif, um, you know...
The Partif, we'll have to see what's in that final,
Yeah.
plan, and then either phase it or figure out, you know, what we can do now, what do we want to do when?
Yeah.
I know it takes a lot of room to store them. Have they got any room with the golf course in that building? Where they...
For what?
To slide those gates in the corner somewhere.
Oh, gosh, no.
You can't slide those gates anywhere.
They don't want to move them.
No, there's no moving those, yeah. One move on those gates.
And that's where they're gonna be at there.
Wherever, when we get that crane and we move them,
Yeah.
that's a one and done.
Yeah.
We move them one time.
One time.
Or you'll have to pre-pull the slabs before you move the gates.
Exactly.
Because you can't leave the gates there hanging there three or four days.
Yeah.
Depends on where they are in the plan, and if we approve the plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, what, what, what date, I'm sure Lamarcos has told us, when are we supposed to find out if we approve this land?
Oh, well, now, that's submitted in...
It's submitted in May, we find out in September.
In September, yeah, yeah. But we have to have the money budgeted.
Yeah, part of the submission is...
Part of that is the commitment.
Funds designated specifically for that.
It's a package.
Yeah.
And we've got a Partif Grant representative that's gonna work, that's gonna work it through for us.
Yes, we've already met with her. Lamarcos met with her. Um, they walked the site, they looked at it, she's very engaged.
Because we showed her the golf course property, the lake property, and Heritage, and said, you tell us what has the best shot at this Partif. And she said Heritage Park.
Yeah.
So that's where we go.
So, that's where that is.
Not that the others wouldn't be a good project to do that.
And we're gonna phase Heritage Park anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the plan. We're gonna phase it anyway.
Okay.
So phase one is where that Partif Grant's gonna go.
Yeah.
It really looks good, it really does.
And this is a little bit off topic, I'm sorry. Um, and I guess I was gonna present it to you all with my parks rates report on Monday, but there was some money that was, that First Citizens gave, the ten, twenty thousand dollars for...
For the landscaping in front of the lake.
Oh, that was the money from the bank.
Right, yeah.
That's to use across the street, Marquee.
Right in front, right in front of First Citizens Bank is, um...
And one thing that we're wondering that Mike could use that for, we're looking at doing digital signs in that Marquee.
Yeah.
And dressing up that box, so maybe using that twenty for that for Partif. I don't know how much that's gonna cost yet, but I took the guy out there, he looked at it, so he's gonna get me some ideas and some costs, and then we'll see what we can do. And then we can control it. Parks and Rec can control it from their center.
Yeah, that is.
It'll be wireless, and they can run ads on it and change it.
Well, that's one item for sure needs to go in, the Lake Park plan, is that one, for sure. Along with the other phase.
That might be separate from the, the Park plan, but...
It could be, but, you know, collectively, they're doing it. And we were gonna do that anyway.
And we're looking at doing digital sign at the corner with the new public safety building. DOT's got a roundabout planned for the corner of Rockfish and Golf View, and instead of doing, you know, a sign in front of police, a sign in front of fire, Town Hall, and Parks and Rec, do one nice digital board out there by that roundabout that anybody comes through there to see it. And then do just a small sign by the entrance, saying Town Hall, Fire Station, Police Station, more of a just a directional sign, not a digital or anything like that. Do another digital sign maybe down where the current Parks and Rec sign is. Do one there, and then a small sign by the entrance just saying Parks and Rec Center. And then across the road, since when they widen that Broward Park sign, it's gonna come down, and since we have two digitals on our side of the road, not have the big Broward Park with the words on it, just the regular entrance sign saying this is Broward Park, something like that. So they, he's gonna give me a quote for all that.
Yeah.
And then what I'd like to do with it is, we don't have consistent signage throughout town. Is come up with like a theme for directional signs in any town.
Well, our gateway signs are...
The gateway signs are, but nothing in town is consistent.
Right.
Or we don't have some, every sign is different. And then that way, just at a glance, you can tell that is a Hope Mills sign, whether it's directional or an entrance to one of our parks. Because if you look at the Lake Park sign, it's just this wood ring that says Hope Mills Lake. Would it be nice if the design of that sign looks very similar to the other kinds in town?
And if the big T sign, you could make the big T sign look more...
Right. And then, you know, when we do the Golf View Park, the Golf Course Park, it has a name or something, a sign out there that matches. Wayfinding signs in town that says, we're post office in the downtown law police station. They all match and are similar. Because you go to a lot of towns now, they have that.
They have that, yeah, yeah.
So we'll get a plan, yeah.
Okay.
See what we can do with that.
Yeah. Are there any other questions about Heritage Park or discussion?
How far downstream are we gonna try to go with it? Upstream, anyway, toward the middle stream.
With, with the park?
With the park along the creek.
Well, it's just, it's what, six acres, I think? Yeah, we, we have to stay within our...
I think we can leave something at four and something. Acres, that the rest of it's in the flood plain.
Yeah.
That's what they told us.
Yeah.
And I don't know, it appears that as you're going around, that where Charles Garner is clearing, it appears that he must have a good piece of the land on down.
Yeah, I think there's like four acres there.
That's what I'm saying, is where his property is, it goes down to the creek.
Right.
So it looks like where we stop,
Right.
he picks up the rest of the way.
Yeah.
But I don't know the rest of it, I don't know, because the, the original goal was to have Rockfish Creek so that it would be clear all the way to Legion Road. Because if you go up in Rockfish Creek, through the flooding, whatever, it's a little, um, side creeks that are off of the main creek.
Yeah.
And that was, that's what the original plan was, to have it so you could, you could walk
Right.
all the way up to Legion Road. And now I think you got lands different since ten years ago.
We may have to have the Greenway because of the whole...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was the original thought, was to have, when NC State came, was to have it so you could, like the Cape Giraffe Trail, you could walk Rockfish Creek all the way up. But that creek bed's changed.
Couple hurricanes have changed that.
Changed the way it's route.
Yeah, yeah, two hurricanes that I know of in the last ten years.
There's a do it.
Yep.
You gotta figure it through, my wife, it's gonna be a thick old week.
Have a good, have a good night.
You didn't find it interesting enough?
Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Okay, uh, all right, so moving on, Golf View, Greenway, um, the master plan. Uh, we've got two, two copies here to share, and, um, I have you written down for this one.
Right.
Yeah, and the athletic fields.
What we're gonna do with the, um...
Tag team.
The golf course property, um, you know, originally, we weren't planning on doing the Greenway out there. Uh, the council, the previous council wanted that done, so we did it, it's out there. It's nice, people are using it, and, um, but that wasn't part of the original plan. But nevertheless, the master plan that we have for the golf course property has been approved. But the original intent for the golf course property was more of a long-term goal. Um, the, I think when we first presented it to the board was two years ago, about while we're doing the public safety building and getting this constructed, let's go ahead and do a master plan for the golf course property, so that when this is done, we'll have a plan that we can start figuring out what we want to do, and how do we want to pay for it, and how do we want to phase in what we want to do with the golf course property. And if we did certain things in the meantime, or planning, if there's a master plan, then we can do things out there that fit in with the master plan, so we're not creating something that we're gonna have to take out later. So, that was the original intent, and now we have the master plan. We want to do stuff out there, but number one, there's no funds for that, for that magnitude. We talked about doing Partif with the Partif Grant, but we decided to do Heritage first because in the original planning again, two years ago, it was supposed to be the Lake, Heritage Park, you remember this, the Lake, Heritage Park, golf course would be the future, but we'd have a plan.
Yeah.
And that was kind of just, the priority kept changing. And it's like, we need to set the priorities and stick with it, because when I'm doing the budgets and I'm planning for the future, when the priorities change, not saying that we can't change them, but then it kind of messes up how we're doing the funding and what we're preparing for in the future.
While we have a plan.
Exactly.
Right.
So...
Well, it's that, and then another piece to this, too, is that this, this master plan on the golf course is another part of the overall comprehensive master plan that we need, that we definitely needed for the Partif.
That we had to have for the Partif, too.
So, I mean, the, the master plan serves two purposes. Identifies, you know, the golf course, the future part of the former golf course. And the bigger piece, it goes with the comp plan.
Right, so I think what we need to do as far as the golf course is concerned is look at it for the future. We do have the walking trail out there now, which kind of satisfies, we're using it.
Yeah, and we're working on the driveway.
It's being used, the driveway is another big thing.
Which, again, there's no money budgeted for that, so we're gonna have to put money...
So what are you gonna, are you gonna be able to have two driveways? Or are you gonna, are you doing, you're gonna...
This will be, the, the temporary one will be one, that...
Right.
It'll be one, it'll be permanent eventually, but it, it'll be temporary for the time being.
So we're gonna do with the current parking lot, we're gonna continue to pay for that?
Well, we have one-year lease on that. Remember, the, the idea being that the parking lot, the temporary parking lot and driveway would be completed within that one year. And we're still tracking on that.
Yeah, that's the plan.
But, that's the plan, so that'll go away.
All right, but now, that temporary parking lot, are we spending money that we could be faith, doing a phase of the, of golf course? And could we incorporate the developer on those other two pieces of property to assist us in maybe some help with green space? Because you're looking at, I know that there's already been a plan, whoever got the YMCA's land, I don't know who bought it, y'all may know.
Chancer, I'm sure.
Okay, but that property is being developed. And then you've got the, um, whatever Mr. George is gonna do with his, that's another thirty-three acres. So you've got over fifty acres of land there, and why not ask them, part of them, we don't want them to, we don't want them to pay us for recreation space like a lot of developers have done. We want them to provide us something.
But what would be nice is, for that one, if they could provide access for Greenway down along the creek bank, because if we do a Greenway trail that connects with ours on the backside of the golf course property, If there's a way to do a greenway trail all the way up to that property that we got on Main Street.
Could we not do what she recommended as the first phase?
The, um, the green box, um, the green toolbox people that, that are coming Monday night, they're gonna talk about some of this and some of the ideas for this.
Couldn't we go back and look at what she recommended as the first phase? Which was what we were gonna do to begin with, and that was the, um, trail back to the creek and ADA parking lot, huh?
That is true. Cause we were gonna use Partif for that. We were. But now we're using Partif for Heritage.
But there's other grants. There's other possibilities. If it's pedestrian, it's ADA, it's sensible.
Right, but we have to match. I mean, they're not gonna pay for the whole thing. Again, it goes back to, we need to set the priorities. What do we wanna do that we can finish? I mean, if I have to put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget to match a Partif grant for Heritage, I don't have funds to do anything else at the golf course.
With our being a tier one county.
Right.
And with our identifying needs, one of the needs that Hope Mills needs is something for our, um, senior citizens, our military, retired, handicapped. And if you go that route, there's a good possibility that there might be funding for the entire amount.
That'd be great. Right.
Think little.
Right, but that would be something that.
I would match in anything, I want them to pay for it.
That would be something that either Parks and Rec, or Parks and Rec, the advisory committee.
Lamarcos is looking at some of those grants.
Yeah, they gotta find these things and.
Cause I think, I believe, based on what I'm hearing, I believe there's money out there and we need to apply for it now before our tier status changes. Cause once we change, and there's a good chance we'll change, then you're not eligible anymore.
Well, I do know, Lamarcos mentioned that he is looking at some grants, um, that, for Heritage, that would, instead of us having to put in.
Right.
The money for the matching.
They might cover some of our match.
That might cover some of our match.
See, that was one of the things.
He's been working that for a while, so.
Yeah, that was one of the things that was very appealing for him to come work here, because he did that.
Yeah.
At Greensville.
Yeah.
Yes.
He found those grants. He found ways to match them.
He was very instrumental in that.
And get these projects done. So, you know, if, if he's able to do that and get those things done. But as far as budgeting for those, what would happen is, it's not in the budget until we get the grant. So.
Yeah.
As far as, you know, those, um, anything for the golf course property won't be in the budget. But then if a grant comes in, then we do a budgeting, accept the grant, apply the funds for that project.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Can I have some D.C.?
Let me answer this question. It's probably gonna go to Melissa too, in a minute. Let me ask this question. What ideas has Lamarcos shared for future use, maybe next year on the golf course?
Oh, tons.
What are some, what are some of his ideas?
Tons. Yeah. Um, they're looking at.
Because of his expertise.
Well, the mayor and I met with, um, with Lamarcos and Parks and Rec staff last week. And, um, they're looking at, um, some new events, and they're also looking at some current events. Moving some things out there to open up and give us a little more room out there. One of them is a kite day.
Okay.
Um, um, what were some of the others? There were some other, oh, Easter egg hunt. Easter egg hunt.
Then using a natural bowl.
Using, yep. Um, and then also some music and some food trucks things out there. And then eventually possibly doing some things as long, as far as with July 4th and maybe Old Mill Day out there as well. Not sure that we're ready for that yet. Um, at some point, we may try it, um, and see. The only problem with that is, that I see in the, in the future is, you know, where we are with the municipal complex, there's more than one way in. There's several ways in and several ways out. Um, if we've only got, if we're talking about just the one parking lot and the one entrance, the temporary entrance, which will become permanent, but then you're kind of, you're gonna get bogged down with traffic there. So if we have a large event there, so there's only one way. Um, so, but we can fill it out and see, try some of these events out there, see how it goes. Um, but yes, they definitely have some ideas for utilizing that space. Um, because they see that right now as a open canvas.
But these are activities.
These are, yeah.
I mean, these are low-cost activities.
These are low-cost activities, exactly.
Things we're already doing, yeah.
He's just moving some of them from where they currently are to a larger field.
To utilize the area, yeah.
Yeah, so, are we just talking about temporary parking, temporary ground, where you're pushing run?
No, it's got to be paved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's paved a lot.
And ADA required.
Yeah, yeah.
Not all of them, but you have to have some handicapped.
Right, they'll be paved.
I just want it to fit into the master plan, so we don't have to buy more asphalt.
Yeah.
When you get ready to do the master plan. That's what scares me.
But we'll be the temporary driveway. You probably don't even need to call it temporary.
Right.
It will match one of the entrances on the master plan.
It does, yeah.
And be the actual main.
Yeah. But for right now, DOT is calling it a temporary drive, driveway, cause that's.
Yeah, but it's gonna be a permanent driveway.
It'll be in the spot that fits the plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's key.
Do they come in at freeway, or who's they coming in?
No, it's not directly across from there, from there. It's down.
From the flat?
Yeah.
Well, this, that area.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly. It's.
Where specifically it is.
More this way, um, because of the.
You know those brick, those brick posts? I think it's the last one. It's right in that area.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with?
Calvin, go on.
What's gonna happen with the driveway for the twenty acres?
It goes back between the parking lot and those houses.
Well, now, when we, when we, um.
He has adhesment. What I'm saying is, once they build in there, are, are we gonna let them come in off the cul-de-sacs that butt up to that? Are they gonna use their adhesment? If they use their adhesment, um.
It's on the fence.
Well, their adhesion is, is right there, I mean, it's, it's, you get car, you get two cars, I mean, you can pass.
Are they, they're, we have specifications. They'll have to meet those specifications for driveway.
What'll happen then with?
They'll have to meet those specifications.
So where they're gonna get a driveway from then?
They can't, they can't be sold to anybody.
Don't know.
I don't know.
See, that's gonna, that, I think that's gonna affect what happens at the golf course. I think, cause being two separate properties, I think you're gonna see the driveway issues for both. And then I think whatever they build.
Right.
Yeah, DOT told us that when, um, when that use changes for, um.
It's a turn lane.
Yeah, that.
It's a turn lane.
They're gonna have to improve it.
So this could be an opportunity for some partnerships.
Yeah.
It could be. I'm not saying it is. I don't know. But they're gonna have to put a turn lane in. If they're gonna develop that, like I think that's what they're doing, DOT's gonna mandate those turn lanes.
Well, see, our entrance was gonna be right near the property line between us and George's property.
Yeah.
Right near that. That was gonna be one of our entrances. The other one was gonna be about midway through the property.
Yeah.
Uh, through entrances that we've got. There was one, a landing, a third one, then it does have been, but DOT said we can only have two, so we've mixed.
Yeah, the third one was to go on.
Right.
If we had one of them, we could help relieve the traffic congestion in that subdivision as well.
Yeah, but.
To a red light there.
It could be that our entrance, um, next to George's property could go back to what's gonna be back in there, but then again, it's got to cross to George's property, so.
Yeah.
We can't do that. It's, it's his property. But again, we have partnerships and agreements.
I think DOT is gonna probably put that on the table where it's gonna, it's in the best interest of all parties.
But it's probably in even George's property's interest.
Yeah.
To have a roadway too. And DOT might say, look, there's three properties there, one entrance. Y'all figure it out.
And y'all work it out.
Yeah.
That's what they might do.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying that the partnership may, may have an opportunity here.
Right.
Because, because of that. He's gonna require that turn lane.
Right, and one of the things is, you know, we could work something out with them, saying, you know, okay, if we put the road on, on our property to get to yours, then what's the trade-off? Trade-off should, could be something like, give us some of your property down by the creek, that you can't develop anyway.
Don't you think it's gonna change anyway with the road improvements? If you look at what they're doing with that circle traffic and how far back, and the house is on one out, this regular property's gone.
Yes.
And so you're looking at what's gonna happen on the other side, they're taking up a break. I just believe that it's gonna affect even what we're doing because to widen to that road.
Yeah.
Home golf course.
Yeah, but what we plan takes into consideration DOT's future plans.
Yeah.
So we're, our side's fine.
Yeah.
The people on the other side, you put two-lane median divided road through there, half of those folks' front yards gonna be.
I think it's a partnership that's gonna benefit us.
Yeah.
I believe there will protest before they cross, across the street, it's gonna cost you.
Could be wrong, Drew, but.
I don't know. They'll have to come to the table though.
They're gonna have, it's gonna be a negotiation.
I'm afraid that situation, DOT is gonna say, y'all get one entrance figured, y'all have to work it out together.
And when you do, come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't know that. So, but that's pretty much where, um, the golf course property is. Unless grants and, and things show up to do anything out there, anything major or that's gonna be part of that master plan.
Yeah.
Uh, is more long-term.
Long-term.
Than short-term. Because we wanna focus on getting the lake, phase two of the lake done and, um, the Partif park of Heritage. And then figure out, once that Heritage master plan is done, how do we wanna phase that in?
Well, we've still got the chapel and the museum to finish as well.
We'll have to talk about those.
And, I mean, honestly, we haven't experienced, you know, a lot of growth this past year. We've had minimal. Um, so our extra.
Let's see how much money's there.
Yeah, we're, our extra money's not gonna be like it should, but that should be changing.
We've got the, the money for the roof and steeple.
Mm-hmm.
That's take, that's.
Uh, the church has to be, we've got to make it ADA compliant.
Okay.
Actually, to be true, the parish house and the church.
It's gonna have to have bathrooms somehow.
The money that we've been spending on that?
Yeah.
Even the tear down the parish house and do the roof, heat and A.C., we didn't have any money budgeted in this year's budget for either of those. Because the last two years, there was never a decision made, what are we gonna do with either one of those buildings? As far as the budget was concerned. Once we get into the budget, then the council has been, well, we need to get heat and air, we need to do this to that building. And it's already approved, or they go ahead and approve to do it. And then I said, Melissa.
Where's that money coming from?
So we've been using the historical committee's funds.
Yeah.
That was allocated for the museum and the church. So that's what we've been using.
Yeah.
And isn't, remember how much is left, but there's still some funds available. We've been using that.
Is there a way, is there a way to, to get a punch list of what's needed on both properties?
Well, since they're the next two things on here.
Yeah.
That's what we're hoping to have available for y'all at the Marcus.
I'd like to see, Melissa, I'd really like to see a punch list for both of them.
Okay.
What, what do we really need to do?
What we need to do to get these two projects finished.
To get this going.
Can we, what, let's do the municipal park, athletic fields.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't know what, um.
That one?
Yeah, we did jump down, we jumped over.
Who was that request? Because what exactly?
That was Commissioner.
Oh, that was mine. I just didn't know if we were doing any, any improvements.
Lamarcos wants to update what's out there.
Uh-huh.
Um, like the scorers' buildings, um, just different things to, you know, we've had people come to that park that said they hadn't been here in thirty or forty years.
Yeah.
And said, it looks just like it did.
Yeah.
I mean, they were reminiscing, they loved it. It hasn't changed. It looks just like it did when I was here thirty years ago. I'm taking it a completely different way. I'm thinking, you mean it looks exactly the same? It looks exactly the same.
Exactly the same.
And I'm disappointed thinking, it should look better then.
Yeah.
This should not look exactly like it did thirty years ago.
Played on it when they were five years old and now they're twenty-five.
The only thing that's changed is that parking lot between the ball fields and public works. Is the only thing that's pretty much different. Um, and now the parking lots that we did on the other side. So Lamarcos got some plans.
Okay.
He is gonna submit some stuff in his budget. I don't know what they are specifically, but he definitely wants to update some stuff. I know we did get some new scoreboards already.
Yeah.
Um, they replaced two or three of the scoreboards. He wants to update the scorer's towers, uh, the things behind the back stops.
Right, right.
Um, and, and some different things. Uh, another thing we need to do is start looking at the asphalt trail, as many people use it. There's some bad spots on it. There's areas where the roots are growing up, even by the lake. So at some point, we're gonna have to look at, you know, doing some overlays and fixing it.
If we have our own crews to do that work, don't we?
What's that?
We have our own crew that can do that work, don't we? We send them to school to do that.
I'm not sure how much they can do or not.
Yeah.
Um, you're talking about streets?
No.
Will this be the asphalt trail? Okay. You know, I mean, we have maintenance folks and they do great at what they do, but I don't know how much they'll be able to do for, you know, an asphalt walking path. I don't know. But that is one thing we're gonna have to look at. So, is that?
Is that kinda what you were looking for?
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
And I mean, just to identify some, some of the major items, because I mean,
Yeah.
we've got, we've got a lot, we've got a lot here.
Yeah.
A lot of costly projects.
Yeah. Can the walking trail at the lake, could that not be a sidewalk? But since there's a sidewalk planned, could that not become a sidewalk?
It could be.
Um. That, then you wouldn't have to worry about.
If, if you took up the asphalt trail along Main Street.
You just have the sidewalk.
And then did about a five-foot space between it, you don't want it right on the road.
Right.
And did, did a concrete sidewalk.
And then those swings could maybe go right there.
Concrete will last a whole lot longer than asphalt.
Well, and part of that, uh, pedestrian way is sidewalk.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So that could be, then you would, then that would be included in that plan and we wouldn't have to put more asphalt.
And they're just looking at the sidewalk.
But then we'll have, then we'll have a lot of roots working that side.
Yeah, we'll have to take care of that.
There's some areas that are really bad.
There's gonna have to be some addressing of that, so, yeah.
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 And that's another thing we're gonna have to address when DOT does the road improvements on Golf View and Rockfish, is their plan shows pretty much from the library all the way around to where the, um, pretty much the veterans memorial is.
Yeah.
Put by Rockfish, is as a concrete sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
So he would take up the asphalt trail for that area.
Yeah.
And the trail would actually be the concrete sidewalk. If DOT takes up our asphalt trail when they're doing the improvements, they will pay to put the sidewalk back. Yeah.
Some of those are gonna have to be fixed.
A brand-new, a concrete curb and gutter, about four feet, and then a, a four or five-foot wide sidewalk. You know, the length of the property. And then the rest of the property would still stay the asphalt trail, but it would connect with that.
And that's a good chunk of money.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Like I said, will the fire trucks be crossing? That need to be heavy.
Oh, it will be.
It can't just be normal.
The, the concrete that's gonna be the driveway for the, um, fire station is gonna be like, I don't know.
It wouldn't have to be brand new now?
It's pretty thick.
What does, how thick does a sidewalk have to be? I'm, I'm not sure. I know it's, I'd say like eight turns.
Yeah, it, it's in the plains that way.
It's a different type of, uh, it's off the plains, probably.
Yeah.
And so they're gonna, they're gonna watch the DOT.
Right. But along with that, the other thing that DOT will propose when we get to that point is, everywhere along Golf View and Rockfish that does not have a sidewalk, they're gonna do that eight, twenty partnership with us.
Yeah. Yep.
And then he can have sidewalks for the entire block.
All the way down to the golf course.
But it depends how far they're going with this part.
I know.
Yeah.
But it'll just be there, the roundabout, and then it would be sidewalk. Of course, if we finally get the one in in front of the elementary school, they would replace that. But our side road would have sidewalk and go all the way to Main Street. And then Golf View would go all the way.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen when they get it past the gas station, down Hill Street, down that bank? What's gonna happen when they get it past the gas station down Hill Street, down that lane?
I'd figure out how to do it. That's what engineers get paid for.
That's DOT.
All we would do is, is pay the, the percentage-
They design, they would design it.
Yeah, they would design it, and we just pay for a percentage of it, because we want to have a walkable sidewalk area.
Yeah.
You know, when we first started this sidewalk stuff, where they wanted to put the sidewalk was at that far from Jackie Williams.
It still is, yeah.
Yeah.
It still is there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's right there.
But they didn't walk up customers.
Yeah, there you go. That's one way to look at it.
My stamps go damp the sidewalk.
Yep.
You'd have to go see Chancellor and get a change of service there, you know, or settle a household.
All right.
Okay, so, all right, so the, um, well, yeah, well, let's do the museum, so-
I do have a question. So, since the municipal park and Golf View anyway, they pretty much go together. So you pretty much know what you need to have in one before you can figure out what you need to do with the other.
Right.
So any type of development is solved for the next several years of anything going in any, either one of those properties. I mean, what I'm getting to is a full splash pad. These, these, this stuff is several, if people want them, because they were highly-
Right. Now, a splash pad can be done kinda separate. At one time, and I don't know what Lamarco's thoughts were. At one time, we were talking about taking the entire area where the current playground is in Municipal Park, from the, um, picnic shelter all the way to the parking lots. And then between both fences of the ballparks, that entire area, it's a pretty large area. You'd still have to have, you know, setbacks from each of the ballparks and, and stuff, but using that entire area for it, an entirely new playground system.
Playground and splash pad there.
That would incorporate a splash pad. It would be at Municipal Park, plenty of parking, people out there walking all the time. It's already used a ton. But a splash pad, what'd they call it? About three hundred thousand dollars.
Three twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, three twenty-five.
So-
Grant money. We gotta look at grant money.
Now, what about Kaboom? Now, I know, could we put in-
I don't think they do splash pads.
No, not splash pads. I'm talking about the playground.
If they could do the playground.
Yeah.
But right now, we're focused on-
The one down at the lake.
Cause that one, that one-
But if we can submit both of them for consideration, right? Ah, I know, that's a Lamarco question.
No, probably Megan. She's-
Yeah, Megan's working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you can do two, but the thing is Kaboom does every year.
I think it's a primary and an alternate.
Okay.
Remember that, cause I worked on that last year. Just ask Megan.
Okay.
Like that. It could be that this year, we focus on the Lake Park.
Next year, we, we focus on the-
The Lake Park will definitely go be a primary.
On the municipal, yeah.
And then work in the, um, but the thing about the Kaboom, how it's different is, it's, it's like a community event where you get a nonprofit to help sponsor it. And he got, I think it's the VFW.
Yeah.
Um-
It is.
Is, is the sponsoring agency, has to be a nonprofit. And then they help coordinate a day that you get, I think, at least a hundred people come out and-
And put it all together.
Make the playground that day.
You assemble it.
Yeah, it's Assembly Day. Right. But there's a lot of things that go into it prior to that, but if you're approved in that grant, um, we had gotten to the point where, if we had gotten it, I think it was last October, we had set a day that was gonna be the community day-
Yeah.
To, um, to do that, but we didn't get the grant, so it didn't materialize after that.
Have we looked at anything with partnership for children? Let's see, put that original step down there.
The playground?
Yeah, there's, there's a big sign that says you're about to partnership. And they're still alive and well, and they still do things. I don't know how much-
I can have Lamarco check into it.
I don't know how much money that-
But the thing is, the way that that playground is setting, if we wanna incorporate a, um, um, splash pad with it, you gotta redesign the whole site.
It makes sense to do it from there, yeah.
Because we put a well in to do the irrigation on the ball fields.
Yeah.
And we can use that well for a splash pad, not have to pay PWC for the money. It's our well, it's our water.
You see, Drew, if we had the money for the splash pad, like Ken won us was suggesting, then we could move, we may perhaps move the Kaboom priority to match that. To put them both together.
Right.
So that's, if we, if we're serious now, if we're serious about the splash pad-
Yeah.
Then the Kaboom would be the match to go in there and not down to Lake Park. And that would really enhance that Municipal Park.
Yeah, I know it would.
Uh, cause I'm the only municipality that doesn't have one.
It really would enhance it.
Municipality has one, and it's, I mean, I know we can't afford a pool right now, but at least at a very, very minimum, a splash pad.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it was a high rank on the, on the priority. I mean, you could justify it, I would think. So anyway.
Okay.
And we should do them both.
Okay.
Don't do one, you gotta do them both, cause you're gonna have to redesign it anyway. So you might as well do them both.
Well, those, isn't they to be fundraiser, like splash pad and stuff like that? Your kids just come and use them free.
Oh, they use the splash pad?
Yeah, no, they're free. It's free.
Just like the playground.
Yeah, cause it's like, it, it, there's no, like, you get in, you're on the, on the, um, concrete and the water comes on. You know, it's not like you're swimming or anything like that.
But there is a season for it. You like start it the whole day and end it later.
Yeah, that's when it kicks on.
And then the kids with the summer camp could use it, cause I know with the water, when they lay in for the sprinklers.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have some of that.
They send them to the fire station and bring those.
Yep, exactly.
The local, the local daycare's run all the kids over there in the summer.
Yeah.
They bust them in to do it.
Yep.
I think, I think it's something serious to really look at.
Okay. We'll try to get some ideas.
Three twenty-five.
All that stuff has to be phased in.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I mean, we're missing big money by not having, uh, the ball complex out there. Teams are paying a hundred dollars a piece-
I know.
To play in tournaments.
Parks and Rec has really improved their revenues.
Oh, yeah.
On the ball fields we got, but the ball fields we got-
But the thing is, they've got-
Those kind of tournaments.
It's funny, though, cause they'll come back and say, you know, making all this extra money, we're making all this extra money, but then you total it up, and it's, you know, it's ten thousand dollars, which is great.
Yeah.
But when I'm looking at a thirteen million dollar budget-
More than that for a golf course.
Ten thousand, not that much, but it is a whole lot better than what they were doing.
Much improved from what they, from what they were doing.
I've been watching some of them, but you know-
Much improved.
At the golf course, if we had that complex on there, the wagon wheel, uh, and I'm gonna quote the county's figure, you guys probably are knowledgeable.
Then you're making more than ten thousand dollars, you're making a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about per weekend.
Yeah, I know.
They get a hundred dollars per team.
Yep.
All they do is put a guy out there to pick up paper on the weekend with a radio or a telephone in case there's an emergency in the bathroom, for him to make a call.
Yeah.
Let's say we could spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars on a base at Wagon Wheel format out there, like that one they built on, um, Hope County. I don't know if you've seen that.
I'm, I'm probably out there.
That was about two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That's where Stephen came from.
Yep. We could do something very similar to that and then start having tournaments out there on that park. And within two years, it's paid for itself.
I think-
Just based on the revenues that we've gotten in from-
The ball field we got now, we can't, we don't qualify for World Series.
No.
Right.
We don't have, we don't have the parking number one. We have to work with the school.
Well, see, if we build that complex with the parking, and say in two years, it pays for itself, well, guess what now? Now that's new revenues that we can put, that we're getting a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Proving it on downfield.
Some of the other stuff at the golf course, some of the other Parks and Rec things. You know, you could just say, hey, everything that we get from the tournaments for three years, we're gonna put it in a reserve fund.
That's where, that's where we did the lake, remember, remember? We did the lake money there.
Something like that.
The county says they get between six and eight million dollars a year from economical, for rental, shopping and-
Yeah.
Economic.
Yeah. They get between six and eight million. Of course, we don't, we won't do that, but if we do two, for three-
What that does is, when you have the influx of people going to the tournaments, the need for restaurants and hotels and those things start going up, we get more development.
Well, we've already got a couple of hotels wanting to come in, you know.
Taxes and residents.
Yeah.
We don't, we can't put them all up in one. This won't happen.
Well, that, that may be feasible to look at, just the cost, just the cost estimate of it.
Yeah. I could splash pad options, give them a bit of a look in there.
Yeah, we've got that.
Wagon wheel.
Oh, that? Yeah, cause that's part of the-
Splash pad's not a revenue producer. Wagon wheel's a revenue producer.
Immediately.
Yeah.
Splash pad, splash, splash pad's gonna be entertainment.
And I don't mean to step on in front of it.
Okay.
Doing Melissa, but what they were talking about was what's going on now. They're running out the ball fields for weekend tournaments now.
Yeah.
They brought apart.
Yeah.
But the tournament they're leasing to and renting to is not like a Nordic World Series or a British Youth World Series.
It's something, but it's not one of those.
Right, right.
You could bring that much in and bring enough in in a week to build a splash pad.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right.
Museum.
Trade Street Museum, so, um-
Punch list.
Yeah.
Punch list on that and the chapel.
We can bring a punch list back, um-
Yeah, I like to see a punch list on both of them.
That and the church.
Yes.
And the church, okay.
Is it feasible that we can get the museum running soon?
Um, well, I think I gave a timeline of the summer.
Is that gonna be?
That's why I'm asking for the punch list.
Yeah.
Let's see, what we really need to do, need to finish both projects.
The other thing we need to decide with the museum is, you know, we've finished building. Who's gonna go in it? Who's, who's gonna man it? Who's gonna run it? Who's gonna, you know, cause we can have the building completed and we can put some stuff in it, but is town staff gonna be responsible for-
We'll have to have volunteers.
Running it or volunteer, or, you know, something.
That's what my question is.
Right. What are we gonna do with the museum when we finish the building? There needs to be some sort of game plan for-
Yeah.
What's gonna be in it? If somebody comes in and has questions, who's gonna talk about what's in, you know, these things?
It's gonna have to be the Historical Committee slash Historical Society that's gonna participate. But you're gonna have to have, you got to have people that come volunteer at the time that, that can talk Pope Mills.
Yep.
And that's what happens everywhere is they're not paid.
Yeah, if you go into that Irwin History Room, I don't know if you've been there, that fellow that's in there?
She's favored offering and volunteering.
I don't know if the same guy's still in there last time I was in it, but every, it was like eight years between the two times I've been, and it's the same guy. And he knows every single thing in there, can tell you about it all.
Well, look at the volunteers that we have that ASO.
Yeah.
There are a tremendous amount of volunteers that man ASO because of funding restrictions. We don't, so this will have to come, this will have to come back to the, to the commission and to the society.
Right, and say, you know, we need a game plan. To me, we need a game plan for what's the end result for the museum.
We'll work it out after.
Cause we can get the building done, but then-
Well, that's why I'm asking for the punch list on both of them.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, what do we need to complete-
Right.
Okay.
To get, to finish both of them.
Cause the, the museum, we put the new roof on it. I think the inside's been renovated somewhat.
Well, we've got-
Why not give that to the committee and say, we need, you're forced to make the project.
We need to input, like, go into it.
Yeah.
Set up, how do you want the shelves or displays or whatever?
And who do you suggest in man it? Cause the first thing that came out before was that we have to hire somebody. See, it's not-
Who's gonna pay for that?
We've now, I have n-
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we've never said we were gonna hire, we said it'd be volunteers. So I think that would be their plan is how, and maybe just limited hours to start with.
Yeah.
Because if you did that, you know, certain time of day-
Right, it's only open-
Twenty-six or something, whatever.
Maybe on the weekends.
They do the mega efforts home in Mississippi. You call a number, a cell phone, and you schedule an appointment. And they go out and they do the tour. It's, it's a very small house that has a lot of history in it. And they, you set the appointment and they come out and they do a tour of the house and then you leave.
Right. But I think there could be people in town that have stuff, um, that still might wanna donate toward the museum.
I think we probably need to put a request for anybody that has anything to donate.
Right, but I think the Historical Committee-
Yeah.
Along with the society or something, I don't know, but they-
You know, the original plan was to, to have it so you could change exhibits out.
Right.
And then we got thinking, well, that's gonna be a lot of stuff to store, and that's where the kids came up with having a lot of stuff digital, so that you could go and look at pictures, you could look at stuff and not have so much that you'd have to have a place to store.
The volunteers need to be knowledgeable.
Yeah.
On material that can-
But if you're, if we're gonna have displays and certain things like that in there, we need to know what are they displaying?
Yeah.
Before we do a display, well, what is it gonna be?
Probably, probably gonna take periods of time at Pope Mills. Cause I, what I have found is that that's pretty easy to come up with, in other words, you can go back to when Sherman burned the mill.
Right.
You can come up with when it was rebuilt, and then you can come up with how we've added more mills to it. But I think that's focusing on the mill.
Right.
And another piece of that could be the railroad, because the railroad was very much a part of Pope Mills.
Their, their first meeting is February twelfth, the, the meeting of the commission.
Mm-hmm.
So that'll be the first order of business for them to discuss on their, on their agenda.
Who's the council person on that now?
Oh, I'm the liaison, but, uh, Chancellor's still the-
Yes, Chancellor's still the staff.
So that'll be his agenda.
Yeah.
One of his agenda items to share with that, with the commission on February twelfth.
You know, what goes in it, that affects the budget of how much you need, cause if it's digital, that's not possible, you know? So you, you need to know what's gonna be-
See, if I don't know what's gonna go in it.
You don't know how to budget.
So I would say at this point, the punch list for the museum is like just getting the building-
That, that, just getting an operation.
Now, all they're waiting for is the committee or society to say, okay, here's what we wanna put in it.
See, and, and over, and over the next coming months, you'll have that opportunity for them to work that. If we get closer to, to May.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor, did, uh, Mr. D's get a donation of some of that?
I just do it on-
Old reject Sherman burn?
Whatever he had, my understanding was that Lisa Waring and Pat Hall got most of it. Then I don't know if Susan has, I don't know if Susan kept anything or not, but I know a lot of Eddie Brierer's stuff went to Eddie D's. And I know that, um, he had whatever he, cause you remember, when he left his office, any artifacts that were in his office went home with him. So we have, what was left was what's down in the storage house. That, and that's, it's a variety, but it's not a lot of stuff, is it? So we probably need to find out, um, what do we have? And then I know that I've heard several people say that, you know, the man from First Baptist Church has got a model of their original church, that he wanted to donate to the museum, because he says it's, you know, what it looked like, and it was given to, um, I think it's older than Episcopal Church, and Pope Mills Number Two gave the land for it. And it wasn't given, the mill itself donated the land, was never considered an heir or anything. But I'm just wondering if, if we, if we see, if we put something out there and said, anybody that has, um, anything that they'd like to see, put in the museum, maybe we could get-
Once museum's done.
Once it's done.
Then we say, you know-
And that's where the punch list is.
So I think you're gonna need it, you're gonna need the stuff.
Cause then you can say, hey, guess what? We got the house, the museum ready.
Yes.
Now we need stuff to put in it.
Yes, and that's where, that's where we'll come back to the commission.
And then we can have it go through the, um, the committee, you know, whatever comes in, and then just keep some documenting what we have, figuring out what we got, what do we wanna display, if you wanna do different rooms of different periods or focus- This room's focused on the mill, this room's focused on the railroad history, this one's focused on-
There was a lot of that stuff- There was a lot of that stuff on the bookshelf in the, uh, for parish house last week, it turned in. I think they put them in storage, and record books, counter checks, all kinds of- I told Melissa I have a little, like a pill bottle full of wood chips, and the guy gave me up in Hickory. That came off, he said off of a bridge on Plank Road. And I've got that in my top drawer. So if we find a place, somebody to collect it and list it all, I'll bring it down.
All right, so the punch list of trade street buildings and the chapel.
And the chapel, okay. And then regarding the, regarding the, um, the former Episcopal parish house, and now it's a vacant lot. So in my manager's report, I put that, um, public works staff is planning to grade and seed the lot during the spring planting season. I have asked Parks and Recreation Director Lamarko Morrison and Planning and Economic Development Administrator Chancellor McLaughlin, due to their landscaping architecture experience, to work with the Appearance Committee to come up with a minimal landscaping design or plan to implement on that vacant lot until the inclusion of the lot into the Heritage Park Master Plan has been completed and approved and the part of grant has been submitted. So that way it won't look so bad, you know, we'll have a little bit of landscaping there.
Would that look good with it shrubbed down the edge of the doctor's parking lot?
Well, that's, yeah, that's part of what they'll work on. That's what they'll work on, yeah.
And I told them too that any landscaping, that they want to move from the police station area. And where we have to clear that property for the new building.
True.
Any of that can be relocated or is worth relocating.
How many of them do it?
Yeah, to dig it up and move it. They can do that now.
Yep.
But sometimes it's just as cheap to buy something new and have it planted than having something dug up and moved.
It's cheaper just to buy a side.
Sometimes it is, so, but I told them if they want something like those, uh, those large, um, what are those? They're almost like holly bush trees next to the town hall parking lot, between it and the road. You know, since they're larger and established, if they wanted something bigger, you'd have to get one of those things that, you know, digs down and picks them up. But if it's worthwhile to do that, and they want to save some of those...
You can get those on a, rent those on a twiller now.
Yeah.
Well, one thing's true, you're gonna have to do something with them.
They have to cut down either way.
And move them and they don't make it, you still, maybe they'll make it, you know? Because I think that's, otherwise they're gonna be...
They're just gonna be cut down. If they're still there when it's time to click, they're just gonna cut them down.
Yeah. So that's kind of what I'm looking at right there. We'll see what, we'll see what the master plan for Heritage Park comes up with that idea there. But in talking about the chapel, Ray's pretty insistent that there's gonna have to be bathrooms. If we want to use it on a regular basis for, you know, events, have an event space, there's gonna have to be bathrooms connected to it. Can you not put them on the back of it? Is there some space? That's kind of where... You know, where those windows are? Yeah, that's what we're looking at. You could go that way.
Either that or do something separate, because either way you gotta come out of the building.
Yeah, but you could go, you could go, couldn't you go through that, what was a doorway in that back door? Yeah.
Possibly.
Yeah. Could, could, could you do... It's on the right side.
On the right side.
On the right side, yeah. Could you, could you not, could you do a unisex handicap bathroom and get by with that? I don't know. I don't know. That's, that's an inspections question and I can't answer that, but... Because I think now that they're calling family units and that way you can, you don't have, you know, you can use it, I can use it. Or we could take kids in there, they could use it, but it's just...
It's identified as family.
They don't use it at the same time.
You just lock the door when you're...
Yeah, it's identified that way.
We all, we're in together.
Because some of us, because some of us are not changing the use of the building.
Right.
Why do we have to bring it all?
We are changing the use. It's no longer a church.
No.
Not a, not a worship space. It's becoming an event space, so it's different.
It's the same, it's the same concept as the ASO.
I've already, I argued with Ray about that, so... But didn't we have in that plan a handicap entrance at that back door? Mm-hmm. So couldn't that be off the parking lot? Couldn't that, it's already had plans somewhere.
Now, we're, we're touring both of these on Monday.
Monday, yes, at five o'clock. We start at the chapel and then we go over to the museum.
This would be a good opportunity for us to, that's why, and that was the other reason why I wanted that punch list.
Yeah.
You know, because we're getting ready to take the tour on Monday. We want to go in both of them.
Yeah.
And look them, and didn't have an opportunity to see against the punch list and what Ray wants to do.
If you got Gordon Johnson's plan for that building? Yeah. Because if you had that, then that would give them, except we don't want to cut pews up. Right, yeah, no, we don't want to do anything with those pews, no.
I don't wanna, I have to go in that church, I don't want to chop.
No, no, it's beautiful the way it is.
Church is nice.
Yeah. Do anything, do it where, yeah, so it's not aware that you've done it.
That is the only opportunity I have is on the right side.
Be the thing where...
Into room on the left side too.
Depending what they're doing up front.
Left side's got that office and the right side...
Couldn't that become the left side?
So there's more room, but I'll, we'll look at it on Monday.
I would take any pews out because we want to get somebody saying, oh silky.
On the right side. The inside of the building is very nice, woodwork.
Yeah.
The lights are fantastic.
Yeah. Stained glass is gorgeous, yeah.
You wouldn't turn more than you.
Uh, Don tried them all. I asked him to try them. I didn't know where the switch was, and it's out in the hallway. He, he went out there and turned the lights on.
Because I know they did that, uh, King, North Carolina, where my grandmother was originally, they restored an old church. But the problem was where the, I guess the front pulpit area was, the pews were like right up to it. And so if you wanted to do a wedding or something, there wasn't room. And they didn't want to change the aesthetics of the church and leave everything, so they just decided, you know, okay, well, there's like 12 rows of pews. We're just gonna take out the first two rows, so there's 10 rows of pews, but now there's room to actually do something up front. And then they put the pews in a different area of the church. They didn't even get rid of them.
Yeah.
But they just put them against the wall where the folks could sit, because there was no room up front to do anything.
There's somewhere to design something. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, he was, what he was doing was taking the pews and making the handicap accessible from the front.
Okay.
That was one way, and then he was taking the pews, so we got up to the front, you cut the pews in half. So that way you put your wheelchair up there, and so we didn't want to cut the pews.
Mm-mm.
And so we figured if you did, how often, if you, if you did have somebody, if you had an entrance that they could come in, then the wheelchair could be in that area.
Right.
You wouldn't have to cut a pew to do it.
We'll stick ahead Monday.
Yeah.
It's our area. There are plenty of stories somewhere.
Well, see, that's what I'm thinking, that we could, and when he was looking at bathrooms, he was putting the bathrooms in the parish house and you'd go across to use them. That's one of the plans. But it's been so long, I don't recall everything about the plan. That's why I was thinking if we look at it, we might not have to have somebody...
The other thing too, we could do is depend on the Heritage Park Master Plan, what the plan on doing with the parking lot next to it and the backside. Because one of the things that I told McAdams was to, um, you know, if you did either an overlook or some type of boardwalk looking thing on the backside of that parking lot? Overlooking that part of the creek, that maybe you can incorporate some type of maybe a little picnic area or something and then have the bathrooms that... But whatever you build, it matches the church.
Yeah.
You know, the overlook, the overlook, it could be wooden and stuff, but if you construct some sort of permanent bathroom, you make it match the church.
Well, listen, it's a possible Ray could, could accompany us down there, go through the church?
Yeah.
In case we have any questions for him. That would really be great if Ray was with us.
You're adding 30 minutes to being out there.
Ray's pretty smart.
I give him a hard time.
You're right. Yeah, but, but his expertise would be invaluable, I think, with this one.
I would just explain to Mr. Melzler, on each side of the pulpit, there's an office on one side, and a place on the right where they hung their firewoods.
Mm-hmm.
Why couldn't one of those be, or both of those be bathrooms accessible from the inside of the church? Something to ask him.
Look at it, see?
Yeah, okay. All right, um...
We had the Gateway Plan?
Yes, and that's you, and the strategic planning, they're kind of one in the same, but sort of, but...
Let's see, you were at that last meeting.
Yep.
Was that, was...
I was there.
Mary was there?
Yeah.
I believe. All right, so then everybody else, um, we've had two meetings. Um, the first meeting in the Gateway Plan was a tour of the area. Um, the second meeting we just had this past week, and, um, pretty much set a game plan of what we're gonna be doing. There's gonna be six meetings total, and then, um, just going through the process of, you know, putting together, I guess, the, the MIA area and the Gateway area for, what was there? There was three main corridors that we're talking about here. And, um...
Exit 41, uh, 295, and then downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, you know, I think right now we set a group that's gonna come up with a, um, what was it called? A theme, not a theme.
A mission statement.
A mission statement, that's it.
They gotta come up with a mission statement.
And then, um, that will kind of, um, generate the excitement and what the plan's gonna be about and everything. And so the next meeting, did we set?
No.
No, they'll bring, they'll bring dates back.
So we're hoping to get all that done by the next meeting, and then, um, I think by meeting four, we'll have the, um, the draft manual put together. And then week five, um, we'll have the recommendations and strategy implementation. And then week six will be the final plan review, and then once the plan review is ready, um, it'll be up for adoption. So it's gonna be, what'd they say, about six, eight months, something like that, in the course, pretty much over the course of a year.
One of the questions I have with it, Drew, is there any cost associated to the town for the Gateway Plan study?
Um...
Do we need to budget, I guess?
We're paying their, we're paying their, we're paying their mileage and...
Yeah, it's very minimal.
It's minimal, yeah.
Department of Commerce.
When they come down, we have to pay them the mileage, but...
We pay their mileage and...
And materials. I think, aren't we...
It's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
Um, now, it could be at the point that they're putting together packets and reviews and stuff.
Well, that's kind of where I was going.
Yeah, and if we have the public, public meetings, um, you know, there may be some cost for that, minimal, it won't, it won't be much.
It's not gonna be something where I have to have a separate line up.
Paid consultants or... Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a, just a question.
And that's why we went, yeah, that's why we went this route. Um...
Okay, but yeah, it's, it's moving on. We're still in the early stages, but, um, it's something that's definitely gonna be, um...
Especially this next meeting with the stakeholders, that's, it's really gonna ramp up from there.
Yeah, and what's happening on Main Street anyway, out there at 59 coming forward. Yeah, the circle traffic, the things are going, those are already in the works, so that's gonna change the way we look.
I'm gonna do it then.
I tell you what, coming out today, on that end, before you get to 301?
Yeah.
It looks really nice.
Yeah.
And if you think about that same style of road coming all the way...
To Parkton Road.
To Parkton.
And then that whole intersection changes down there.
Well, that development that's coming through right before Parkton too is, is, that whole end of town is gonna change.
Top of the hill.
Yeah.
It's interesting to see every day what's new.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's live every day, every day.
And then what's happening out Chickenfoot, out there where they rerouted Sand Hills. All of that is, the whole face out there is looking different, so I think that side of town is gonna quickly become what we're planning without us having to do a whole lot.
Exactly, what's good about it happening on that side of town, it doesn't affect the traffic.
Downtown.
Downtown.
Or anything else going on that you could say is considered in town, you know?
If we get them to reroute trucks and everything over to 162, that's gonna make a big difference.
Way to get it.
It's making a truck route, you take that new exit off, and you come right up and take it. They're gonna, I think they're gonna move toward doing that because of...
You'd have to make them do it and say, this is the established truck route.
Yeah, well, that's...
On their own, they're not gonna do it.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, that's gonna, the signage and everything will be done and no truck, no, no truck, no thoroughfare.
Because I know if you're, if you're...
Welcome to Lillington.
Where I come to work, I go through, um, Lillington every day, and there's a separate truck route that they have to go, um, out, uh, before you get to 401 and take that route, so you don't have all those truck trailers and stuff.
So that's what they did that was, because we, 59, it's not what it was when we first had 59, because it used to go all the way to, you know, for 59 turn, now stops on Raker Road.
Yeah.
It was always considered to connect to and go all the way out, and now 59 basically is right there. And that, except it stops on Raker Road, you don't pick it up on the other side. The other end goes out to exit 41. That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
Why's it even still got a...
Because it has to be, that's where we're trying to get them to change its name.
Right.
Or change it's what it's called.
59, because it really...
It could just be Main Street. It could be Huggers Road.
Chickenford Road, Main Street, South Main Street. Can I ask a quick question?
Okay.
Um, is there any money associated with any inspections or anything coming up with the dam towards that?
Well, we have ongoing maintenance that we put in the budget, yeah.
But not for the contractor, so we have to still pay him to come back. Well, we're under contract with the contractor for a while.
Yes, well, we've got, we've got, um, the, what is that, monitoring that we're doing?
Yeah.
Monitoring, sure.
We've got monitoring contract. Yeah, we, we, that's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah.
That's a forever.
At this point, that's just regular maintenance.
Yeah.
How much does that cost?
I don't remember.
It doesn't matter how much it costs for a benefit.
Yeah, but that's actually just part of, um, it's in Don's budget for dam maintenance.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm proud of that dam.
Yeah.
Jackie and I went through some heat over there.
That's right. Some long... And strategic planning.
Okay, strategic plan. Um, y'all got to meet, um, Ashley.
Anderson.
At the Gateway thing.
Yeah.
She's great. Um, what we did was now, we've already done the, what's called the preliminary part, where we had our department head retreat. Um, Ashley was there, one of her coworkers, and they got all the input from, um, the department heads. So that was the preliminary with staff. And we went ahead and did that because we had our department head retreat. Normally that would be like the second thing that you did, but since we had the time and the availability, we went ahead and did that. So what we're gonna do now, sometime in March, is a kickoff meeting. And with this kickoff, there'll be a, um, a community tour, um, and looking at the different aspects of town and kind of, you know, what is Hope Mills? If you wanted to tell somebody what is Hope Mills, what would you tell them? And then if you brought somebody to town, what would you show them? So, um, I took Ashley all over town. I showed her every piece of, everything that we had. Spent an afternoon driving around, so she's seen it. So sometime in March, we'll have the kickoff meeting, and then at that meeting, we'll be setting a timeline. Okay, the timeline will consist of a research and assessment, and that'll be doing, um, going back and seeing, are there any previous studies that the town has done in the past? She wants to kind of get those and look at them, and then, um, any current, Chancellor will help out a lot with this. Any current economic retail development, that sort of thing, what's going on now. We'll do a benchmark analysis, we'll do stockholder engagements, we'll do best practices sessions, and at those, we're looking at everything, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And then we'll have a strategic planning workshop, and then we'll generate a final report. So those are things that are coming. And right now, we're still waiting for the, what was it she called it? The agreement?
Um... Yeah, she called it, yeah, she called it something else.
Yeah, I can't remember what she called it. It's like the contractor agreement for what we're doing. But the group that kind of assists with them on this, they gave them what they were gonna do. It wasn't what they expected from this time. They work with this group all the time, but what they gave them is something completely off from what they've done before.
Yeah, so they're reworking it for us.
So they're trying to rework it, um, how they want it to be. So once they get that done, this will actually be bringing the council, okay, here's the...
Here's the agreement.
You have the contractor agreement, and then once that's done...
Supposed to be ongoing this year.
Well, yeah, is, is the cost increasing? Because we budgeted for this last year.
That's one of the things to...
Both of you guys, we budgeted for this last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So probably what we'll do is, um, right now, we haven't had to pay anything.
Good.
Because right now, we don't still have an agreement with them, so...
Even though they've been working on it, but...
But she has done, you know, the preliminary with staff.
Sounds like Rachel.
We invited her to the, um, the Gateway thing.
Yeah.
And, uh, and she came.
Yeah.
But that just gives them more insight of what to put into the...
Yeah, I, I think she needs to be involved in that to understand, you know...
Well, that goes with a lot of economic development stuff too.
Exactly, where we're gonna end up.
Oh, yeah, they're all in concert together, and that's why I'm glad to see her as part of the, the MIA group.
Yep. She's the, well, measures rest on her state. Yeah.
Yeah.
You met Ashley the other day, didn't you?
She, she had her hair back in a ponytail, she's a blonde, she's an attorney.
Yeah, she was sitting next to Drew.
But her firm does, um, strategic planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Their firm, Sanford Host House, I've worked with them for a long time. If we ever get to the point that we're doing bonds, uh, Bob Jessup, he was at our budget retreat.
Yeah.
Year before last, when we first talked about this.
Yeah, and talked about the bonds.
He does bond counseling, and he's, he's great.
Excellent. His presentation was stellar.
Oh, yeah.
I remember it too, oh, yeah.
I've known him for twenty-some odd years.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a little bit of a time crunch because they close at nine, so we've got to kind of finish up, but I think we're getting down there, so...
We've got one left, unless...
Yeah, so, okay, the sidewalks, the Rockfish Road sidewalk, I'm gonna jump to that one first. That is, um, going to, that's scheduled to begin as soon as school is out. That was the best that everybody could come up with. Contractor was not, um, able to work around the DOT time constraints with school in session. So the plan is, once school's out, he should be ready to go, so...
Is he gonna complete it by the time school comes back?
That's the plan.
That's the, you know, it's, I, I, I got, I see what he's doing on the front end, I'm more concerned about the back end.
That's the plan, and, and that's why he couldn't do it during the, the amount of time that he's planning to work.
He'd had to have a fragment.
That's the standard. Hey, look, if you want to do it when school's out...
They're not talking about working just eight hours.
Well...
They're gonna work, they're gonna work, pretty much, sun up to sundown.
He's gonna have to.
Every day.
He's gonna have to to meet that August deadline.
Yeah.
So, is that stressed?
All that stuff being in there for...
Yes, yep. Yep. So, that's the plan. That's the plan with that, so... And then Johnson Street, you know, that's... I've got an update in my manager's report. CSX has given their comments back. McGill is taking those into consideration, and I think... I'm not sure if... Let's see where I've got that.
Mr. Marley, you've been on news quite tonight.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Surely. You wait till tomorrow.
Right, so, yeah. CSX has sent those comments, has sent comments back to McGill, and once those are addressed, then they'll do updated drawings, and those will be sent to NC DOT. And hopefully, after that's done, then that project will be starting.
The question I have for both of them, Drew, you know, where I'm gonna ask, is there any additional cost that we need to budget to complete both these projects?
Yeah, we still have to fund the remainder of the project.
Yeah.
But the original...
That's why I have it on here.
Yeah, the original funding was never spent, so...
We still have that.
It's just gonna be one of those things that we're just gonna have to pull out, you know, when a prior year flows, that money goes into fund balance.
Correct.
And it's just sitting there.
Yeah.
So, I'll just have to reallocate it.
I'm just looking for future costs that we're gonna have to budget for against this wish list of everything else that we're talking about tonight.
Well, I think they are gonna have to start doing it.
Exactly.
The last two years, we've used a lot of fund balance. Two years ago, we used a lot to do all the extra stuff to get the dam finished. And then last year, we took almost half a million dollars out to do the bulkhead. That was not the original budget.
It appeared the year before that, didn't it?
Yeah.
The good thing about what we did use fund balance for, we spent it on assets operations. That's the only reason that I'm okay with it. So, pretty much in the accounting world, it stayed on the balance sheet. It just went from equity to asset.
Yeah.
So, it didn't go to an expense, like for operations or something like that. You never wanna be able to have to do that. But the side of that is, if we wanna get into... I don't have a problem with USDA and getting these loans, but if we keep having years, and we've got plenty of fund balance, if we keep having years that we're using fund balance instead of putting money in it...
Yeah.
They come down, down, down.
LGC, or if we wanna borrow money for something, they're gonna say, "Until y'all start..." It's not really a profit for the town, but if you think of it that way, until y'all start showing a profit, we're not gonna prove that y'all can borrow any money.
Well, we have to show new revenue streams.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, we buy police cars every year. We bought...
But we haven't done any loans, because what I've had to do in order to structure our debt so we could pay for the public safety building is, we haven't had any loans other than the fire trucks for the last several years.
Yeah.
That was intentional, because they had to get our debt down so we could make this payment. Now, once we do that, in about three or four years, in two years, our debt drops significantly. I think 2022 or '23. So, once we pick this up, we're gonna have one year that's gonna be a little bit of a struggle. The first year that we have to do that. If you're after that, it's not gonna be a problem. And then that's when we can actually start, say, doing loans again for police cars if we need to, or... And then we'll be replacing our next two fire trucks, or if we do get property from these developers and it's time to do a substation.
Yeah.
You know, we can borrow money for that if we need to, but...
One thing I'm always in favor of there, public safety guy, need to have vehicles that are dependable.
And they're on the rotation now.
Yeah.
It's just automatic.
That's good.
We did that.
That was one of the first things I did when I got here. We put the fire trucks and the police cars on rotation.
That's one of the best things we've done.
We had these cars on rotation years ago when they got away from us.
Yeah. Speaking of that, Drew, are you gonna publish a new CIP?
Yep.
Yeah. It'll be updated.
You'll have this at the March 6 meeting.
At the March 6.
Okay. Because what we're gonna do is take these, give it to each department head, and take this, and then you'll get the 2020 version.
Ah, ah, there we go.
Yep.
Now, we're talking.
Where is the sidewalk going down Johnson Street at? In front of the old houses, or...
It go... Those aren't my houses, those are Charles Gardner's houses.
Yeah.
They go in front of those houses, all the way down in front of Harriet Corners and Cross down Trade Street.
On the other... On that side.
So, everybody thinks it's gonna benefit me, but it's not. I feel sorry.
Did that horse down?
Yes, he did. Well, they had to put him down. His health got bad.
I saw him laying out there the other day.
One thing I want to ask, and I might be the only person to ask this, but I'm concerned about our attorney, and I believe that we ought to evaluate our attorney, and I also believe that if... I don't know, but my concern is the fact that I don't believe we're getting as good a service as we were getting, and I don't know, because I see that when somebody asks for something and you see, like, I've been paying attention to the, um, plan for the water, the... What's the name of that company that was just gonna do the...
Water Service?
Oh, the, yeah, the service water.
Utility service.
I've seen that come through many times, and you're waiting for Dan's comments, but then you get Dan's comments on something that is irrelevant and he shouldn't be responding to. So, what my concern is, what can we do to make sure we're getting the best service? Because I believe in that some instances, it's not happening, and I'm just... I throw that out there, because I know from the very start, I was much... I was much in favor of, he was doing a great job, but now I'm concerned, you know?
I think you'll probably just have a talk with him.
You might have to have me.
Well, I'm...
Or do it, or do you...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I... Yeah, and I just wonder if somebody else in his practice that could take his role.
We don't... We don't review them. Has fire boards reviewed the town attorneys' performance?
We hired fire, we hired a town...
Well, I know, but have we reviewed them like we do the town manager?
We've never... We just reviewed... We've just based it on the work they've done.
It was not in our policy, it needed to be in our policy.
The city reviews their town attorney.
I believe we need to do something, and I believe that they should not be taking calls from private citizens. They should not be responding. I believe that they're hired by this board, and this is who they respond to, and I really don't believe individually we should contact them. I believe we should go through Melissa, and what I normally do is say to Melissa, this...
Yeah, I did talk to Dan, and he indicated to me that he is not taking calls from the public.
He's not, he's taking emails. Let me show you some of them. Yes, he is, and I don't believe that... I don't believe he should be taking any type of...
Correspondence.
Correspondence. And the only thing that's good for us that's different than before, and I'm saying on film, the only thing that's good for us is had been the other attorney, every minute, every second would have been billed, and he would have billed us no matter who he was talking to, and that's the difference, is that he's taking our time, that it should be directly related to town business, but I don't think... I don't think it's his practices or...
Well, one of those emails I requested that be handled.
Well, when he forwards me an email so that I'm aware of it and reminds me of the law after I've been told on twice, that bothers me.
Right.
That bothers me, 'cause I don't...
Yeah, now, I'm not talking about that email.
But what I'm saying is, that's what bothers me, is I believe that that's doing... That's not his job, unless he is going to, you know... I just don't believe, unless he's gonna have it. He can have outside clients, and they can pay him, but that's my... Maybe we should evaluate him, I don't know. That's just my opinion.
I think anybody works for us, we should have the right to evaluate.
Yeah, 'cause we don't... We haven't ever done an evaluation on... That I'm aware of, we've had...
Yeah, well, I don't think so.
We critiqued attorneys, and we fired attorneys, or we... They've resigned before they were fired.
This is my seventeenth year, and I don't ever remember.
I think if you... I don't know, can we do that in closed session?
Yes, yes, because he works for the board, so that is a closed session.
What would you call that?
For personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah, personnel.
I mean, I certainly think you should talk to him about your concerns, and then if he wanna do...
No, it'd be personnel, wouldn't it?
Oh, kind of, yeah. That's what I'm saying, is it doesn't matter.
Well, maybe...
And if you don't wanna do a formal evaluation, you could just talk to him.
Yeah.
I think that would be the best route to start with.
Yeah.
Just have a conversation with him.
As a board, yeah.
As a board.
Maybe, I don't...
Just have a conversation.
I think it's gonna have to come as a board, because I've had a conversation with him as an individual, and I'm... I don't believe that it's being handled the best it should be handled, whether or not he responds openly or not, it's kind of...
Mr. Marley came out his shoe.
Yeah, do we wanna...
I think everybody's right. Just like I have fun with the folks that are here, you know, even not with the communities and anybody that has a function for the town needs to have written direction, and we've been directed, so they don't step outside that line. And if we're not... If we're not giving him direction, or telling him, "This is what you can do, this is what you can't do," until we give him that direction, and like the nurse said, not be... Not be time... There's nothing against him personally, but there might be time to be able to talk about direction and do that guy.
Do y'all wanna do that Monday night? Or, I mean, you're doing my... You're doing... We're beginning my evaluation Monday night, so personnel is already on the agenda. Do you wanna broach that subject with him Monday night?
Yeah, I don't wanna be the one doing it. I would prefer if y'all have the same concerns, if I'm the only one with the concern, I do not wanna be the one doing it.
This side, when I was on tour last, I haven't been too involved, I don't know what I can say about it, but with the previous attorney, we had gotten in a situation where the public was contacting him, and he was building a record mix at his family, and we were getting... I would've just on his... He had written notes.
Oh, I know. I saw his billing statements, because you guys eventually put them on the agenda.
Yeah.
Had to.
We, uh... It is here, but...
Let me ask this question. Does the... Jane, does the league or does the School of Government have a document referencing the role of a town attorney?
I can...
Well, and I say that because somewhere, I think, and I say this to you, Jane, just because I think... I think there's an opportunity for us tomorrow to bring that up.
Yeah.
What is the role? And I mean, they publish that as a guideline. I mean, you have one, town managers have one, you work as one.
Guidelines that you're expecting.
Yep.
So, we need one for him.
To do or not to do, say, here's what...
We can ask that.
Yeah, we can definitely...
Well, I think the thing... I think the things that you need, now, unrelated to that, what I'm concerned about, but the things that you need, I don't think we should ever have to wait. If it's something that's... You've asked for, and you've asked for, and the reason why I know that is, 'cause I'm tied in on that email to the people that are gonna do the sewer and water stuff. It holds up progress. Same thing happened with Fox Matter. Remember Fox Matter? Same thing happened there. You needed comments and...
Just say it's okay. I did the work.
Yeah.
I did the work on those documents.
Just to check it off.
Just make sure that I didn't mess anything up.
Yeah.
I agree.